...to order for Monday, February 27th, 2012 with roll call. Mr. Borkenhagen, Mr. Cummings, Mr. McNeven, here.
Here.
Mr. Mering.
Here.
Mr. Mortimer.
Here.
Mr. Bedrow and Vodak here. Continue the pledge, which is behind the screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It would entertain that it be resolved the Board of Education approve the minutes of the February 13th meeting as printed.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mering, seconded by Bedrow. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the minutes as presented signify by signing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes carry. Bring us to correspondence. And before I get into correspondence, I just want to express condolences and let the public know that our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Josh Bloom. He was a senior here at Baraboo High School. He was involved in a fatal traffic accident last week. His mother Nancy is a teacher here at Baraboo High School. And also to the family of Robert McGann, who passed away unexpectedly last week. His son Mike McGann is also a teacher here at Baraboo High School. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as they move forward after a difficult time. I have nothing else for correspondence. Board members with correspondence?
I have two correspondence. One is a letter from Lori Van Austin, West Kindergarten Center Special Education teacher in support of the PLC calendar and what that does for West Kindergarten faculty, the ability for them to work together across areas to focus on student achievement. And the letter simply indicates that it's been working very well from their perspective. Lori is also a parent and her comment is that she'd like to voice her support for keeping the current day in time for the PLC. I feel it's easier for parents to plan for this time when there is some consistency in the schedule from year to year. Thank you. I have a second correspondence. As president of the school board, Mr. Vodak received a letter from Mr. Frostman to read into the record for correspondence. Since that letter indicates that there is no expectation of privacy of the letter and since the subject of that letter specifically refers to me and to certain allegations about my intentions and behavior as a board member, I ask Mr. Vodak if I could read the letter into the record as well as make a short reply. Mr. Scottman writes, "I am writing because of an ongoing concern regarding the actions of a board member outside the authority of the school board. Once again, in today's Baraboo News Republic, there is an editorial authored by Mr. Bedrow specifically referring to his title as a member of the Baraboo School Board. As a former member of the school board and periodic contributors of editorials, I expressly sought to avoid any editorials as a board member or representations outside of board authority. I also objected to the use of editorials by other board members. I was also on the board when you, Mr. Vodak, took the opportunity to remind all the board members of the dangers, innuendos, misrepresentations, et cetera, that can occur when a board member acts outside their limited authority to act only when the board is in session. I believe that Mr. Bedrow's editorial with the open use of his referral to his position as a board member is clearly in conflict with Board Policy 161, which states that members of the school board shall have authority only when acting as a board member legally in session. While the policy further states that the board is not bound by these statements, those editorials are intended to state the opinion offered is that of the School Board of Education. I would ask that a reminder be provided to the member, as was done in the past. I am offering this information to you directly, but I have no expectation of privacy. I would intend on offering public testimony if the board does not act. Please understand that whether I agree with the editorials is immaterial. My statement would be the same regardless of the content of those editorials. I am asking for consistency in the board's action. Thank you for your continued efforts, Scott Frostman." I would like to say that on the larger philosophical issue here, I am in agreement with Mr. Frostman. As a point of clarification, however, when running for the elected office of Baraboo School Board, I sign my letters to the mailbag, that is, the Baraboo News Republic's open forum, not editorial, as Peter J. Bedrow candidate for public, for Baraboo School Board. After being elected, I drop the candidate in place of member, which I believe accurately reflected the change in title. At no time in my letters, not editorials, those are the sole provenance of the editor, nor at any other time serving as a member of this board, in communication with administration, staff, teachers, parents, or students, have I invoked any authority other than my own point of view, except when serving in my official capacity at this table per board policies and state statutes. Having clarified that for the record, I wish to respect Mr. Frostman's concerns. And with or without a title, I believe the people of this community know who I am and what I stand for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I also want to note, I did receive, and so did the rest of the board, a correspondence from Michael Schmoller from the Wisconsin DNR. He is the Regional Spill Response Coordinator. And in that communication, he indicated that he would like to meet with a segment of the board to do, to review the protocol for the hazardous waste disposal that the district is undertaking throughout the years. I talked with him this afternoon. He has agreed to meet before the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee at a meeting time and place that we can agree upon as a committee. So I know the board received that correspondence. I just wanted to update you on the conversation that I had, and that will be a future agenda item for BGNT to review that process. I have nothing else. Any other board members?
I do, but I'll give legislative update. I'll do it during that portion.
Okay. Any other board members with correspondence? Administrative correspondence?
None.
You're up, Mr. Mering.
Okay.
Legislative update.
All right. I will try to make this short. I could make it a lot longer, but I'll do my best.
Really? Really? Why is that hard to believe?
Please don't push me, Sean. Okay, first, the voucher loophole resolution. I sent that to Fred Clark and Ed Brooks and various others, carbon copy. Fred Clark sent a note back saying that, yes, he will vote for it once it goes to the floor. That was on February 15th, and I've got that correspondence for anybody that would like to read it. And Ed Brooks said he would also vote in favor if it would be brought to a floor vote. That conversation was roughly about the same time as I received the note from Fred on February 15th. On February 17th, the resolution was brought to the floor. It was to be asked, a vote was brought so that it could be brought to the floor. There was a conversation back and forth, and it was rejected on a straight party line vote, including Representative Ed Brooks, who voted against bringing it to the floor. Ed, since that time, has said, yes, he will vote for it if it's brought to the floor, but it's not in his power to bring it to the floor. Yet he voted against the resolution when he had the opportunity to bring it to the floor. Hopefully, it will still be brought to the floor. We're still working with the legislation. I've been in conversation with Speaker Fitzgerald's office and the governor's office on this to see if they can put some pressure to bring it to the floor, though it is mainly in Speaker Fitzgerald's office to, is responsible to bring it to the floor. The other thing that's just come up recently is a resolution regarding special education vouchers. And this is a resolution which has already passed the Assembly Education Committee, and it will be in the Senate Education Committee for Public Input tomorrow, and hopefully it won't go any farther than that. But at this point, they are going to, just briefly, the special education students, they're going to give a 5 percent cap for the first year, at least that's the Assembly version of it, for all special education students in the state of Wisconsin. And this is the first draw of the money from the state. Roughly $13,500 per student is the level that the Assembly has placed. That would impact us roughly in Baraboo, roughly $300,000 if it was the average. It could be lower, it could be higher than that if the legislation were to go through. This would definitely have a negative impact on our revenue and also on the property taxpayer. It would have, it would have a very negative impact in that regard, too. But that's just one aspect. The aspect that's really difficult on this legislation is the private schools, the voucher schools are not required to follow the IEP. They're given the IEP. That is definitely not in the best interest of that student. They do not have the accountability measures that we have to follow, and so they're basically given the money without the accountability. So working with the legislation, the Legislation Assembly Bill 110, it was cosponsored also by Ed Brooks in this regard, and I don't know if he understands what he's voted for. Fred Clark has corresponded back with us, and he's doing whatever he can to obviously try to stop this legislation, which would have a very negative impact on, I believe, on special education students and our school districts throughout the state of Wisconsin.
My understanding, Doug, also is that the legislation does not require specific special education certification
No.
of those teachers.
Thank you.
So you're handling, you're taking special education students out of districts. You're putting them in private school institutions, and you are not asking or demanding that those special needs students receive qualified services from certified instructors.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, again, I'm trying to make this brief, but it's tough because there's so many things that are involved with this legislation. And I'm putting into the record, too, alert from the Wisconsin Board of People with Development of Disabilities, Disability Rights of Wisconsin, and they are very much against this legislation. This is a group that's not affiliated with schools. Their thing is to represent special education students, regardless of wherever they are. And so if they don't feel positive about it, this isn't just like the Wisconsin School Board Association or many of the other groups that have, that have already tied in against it. This is a group that's here to represent special education students. So this is not good legislation, and it's, bad legislation frequently gets pushed in at the end of a legislative session. Well, this one is definitely there at the top of that list. We are also proceeding ahead with the ESA, ESEA, or No Child Left Behind Waiver, as it's better known. Tony Evers has submitted this to the federal government. He did that last week. The waiver is structured along the lines of many of the things that Baraboo School District is already doing and continuing to move ahead. I think it's a very positive step forward. But unfortunately, we've had this collaborative process with DPI, the governor, and the legislature, the Senate, the Assembly, worked all together and various other groups. And there thought there was an agreement that was a thing that everybody would be on the same accountability page, including those in private school vouchers who were receiving public money. But when the legislation came through, that group was kind of left off of the page, that, well, we'll get to them later. And so there is definitely a wrestling match that is occurring with that particular part of the legislation. It is being submitted, but mainly it's just to cover the public schools session. If we're going to have accountability, everybody should be accountable, too. Along the same lines, I do have news that today, the House is moving ahead with No Child Left Behind or ESA, new legislation, and actually, it's called the Effective Teacher Act, and it's HR 3990. And my first look-through on it is that it basically is following what we're doing. But, you know, that's my first review of it, but, so it doesn't look like, whatever we proposed as a state is, it doesn't look like there's really anything that's conflicting with it. With that, that is my shortened version. It could have been a lot longer.
I don't know. Don't sell yourself short.
Okay. Is there any questions I can obviously answer, or we can just move on?
I'm sure you'll keep us up to date, Doug.
I'm sure I will.
Outmost confidence, you will. Thank you.
You're welcome.
These are important, incredibly important issues. This school board takes its direction or its funding from a source, and that source needs to be paid attention to. Thank you, Doug, for paying attention to what impacts us.
You're welcome.
Okay. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Public Viewpoints. Do we have anybody here for public viewpoints tonight?
It's my daughter's birthday, and her sister is calling in.
Do we want to have that for a public viewpoint?
Thank you.
Is that on the agenda?
It was on my daughter's agenda, and I don't know how to turn it on.
I don't think this correspondence section is ever going to end. I got some leftover Valentines I could introduce. Do we have anyone here for public viewpoints tonight? Anyone for public viewpoints? Any public viewpoints? Hearing none. We will then move on to staff and student recognition, and for that, I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Ritzenthaler for our recognition tonight.
Well, you are going to be hearing some information tonight about our mid-year benchmark assessment data, and part of that assessment data will include the area of math. And we're happy here tonight to have a math coach from GLW, Helmy Tennis, who served in that, that role quite effectively, as well as Chastity Gabrielson. And we'll be looking at some of her classroom data tonight, as well as one of our Gordon Wilson students, who's made terrific gains and progress and has worked so hard to make sure that he can achieve in that area. So if I could have people come up? We never just let you sit back and make your. Let's start with Chastity. Is there anything you'd like to say about your student?
Oh, I just have to say that this young man just dedicates so much hard work and effort to his school day that I'm just very proud of him. And he's shown tremendous progress in math and in other areas.
I just want to say congratulations on that. And probably you're working with the teachers, Ed, Gordon Wilson.
We both are. And we have to say that the teachers are the reason our scores are going up.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're so excited to share that tonight. So what we have for you tonight is a medallion. It says Honors for Excellence. You can wear this with pride at your school and tell the kids that you came to a school board meeting, and we're so very, very proud of you, and we're looking, and I didn't, I forgot to say your name, and I practiced. Hi, May.
Yeah.
Roomie, straight. All right. You can wear this with the team bird colors, and I thought we'll see you at school with that. Thank you for coming tonight. Just get a picture.
Hi, May. Get your turn look like.
No one's going to be leaving us this year unless we can talk her into staying.
Can you turn?
Hi, May. I was hoping you'd picture of Hi, May once she doesn't want to get out there with him, and how you doing, guy?
Paparazzi. Not a sneaky one, though.
Thank you for coming tonight. And thank you, parents, for coming, too.
Thank you, as always, Dr. Ritzenthaler for that segment, and of course, as you mentioned, for teachers and students here tonight to help celebrate that recognition. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Continuous School Improvement. And here to help review some of the benchmark data is Ms. Miller.
Now, we do have much to celebrate, so that was just maybe a little prelude to what we're going to talk about. And they don't tell their own work very much or often, and I do want to just reiterate as they're walking out the door, that our math coaches have been significant this year in helping guarantee same common learning principles across the grade levels and across buildings, which I think you'll see is paying off. So to start out, I did come in the fall and talk to you about assessment data based off of math, which is a benchmark assessment. And I want to remind you that benchmark means it's data that we collect fall, winter, and spring, so that we can see how students progress throughout the course of the school year. So tonight, I'm going to share math data that is benchmark data, and it's just for grades two through eight. So as we move forward here, I'm going to show reading first and then math, and we're going to go by grade level. And you may recall in the fall, the way to read this chart, the blue line is Baraboo here, to represent our school colors. Fall, winter, and spring are the assessment windows. We've only done fall and winter thus far, so we'll come back in spring and show you spring as well. And we're showing you in relation to NWEA, which is the vendor for the math assessment, and that's based on their norms that they collect across the country for all second graders in the area of reading. So it's one way for us as a district to measure our students in comparison to a normed group to see how are we doing? Because right now, this is just internal data for us. And on the left-hand side, you see mean RIT. And RIT just means a grade score, and so as students move through their assessment and through their grade levels, we'd like to see that RIT score get higher and higher and higher as they go through. Mean and average. So our average second graders in comparison to the average of the norming group, and that's how you read this. So in terms of this chart, you can see, as we saw in the fall, that our second graders are performing a little below the norm in reading. They are making somewhat parallel growth. If you look a little closer, they are going to close the gap if they continue on the trajectory that they are. So we'll wait and see what spring brings us. To dig a little deeper, I have two charts here. The top chart looks at attainment, so it's looking at attainment of our different elementary buildings at the second grade level in reading in relation to NWEA. So NWEA is at the top here. That's the norm group. And here's how North Freedom, GLW, East, and AVE have performed in relation to the NWEA. So in terms of East, you can say, wow, there's great attainment there for our second graders in reading. But another way to look at this data is let's look at how much growth has occurred since the start of the school year. And you can see that, on average, our district growth was a little over eight RIT scores. Look at GLW's growth. It's over, it's over 11. The average growth of second graders across the country is 7.7. So when you look at our growth in second grade reading, if I were to flip back, we're still not closing the gap quite yet, but if we dig deeper, our growth is at a higher rate than average across the country, so that's something to celebrate. And if we continue on that trajectory, we'll close that gap. One of the things we did on February 15th during our PLC release time was to have our grade level teams come together after they saw this data and talk about, well, jeez, at GLW, what are you guys doing in second grade that the rest of us can learn from? And so we're sharing strategies with each other to hopefully get those gains across all buildings. Okay, so now we're just going to go through the grade levels. Here's third grade. Again, we started a little below the norm in the fall. We're having good growth, where again, we're starting to close that gap. And in terms of attainment, you can see how the different buildings achieved in relation to each other and to the norming group. And you can see in this case, too, that both GLW and AVE had significant growth, and the average growth is 4.7, but as a district, we're at about seven. So again, good gains across the entire district. You'll notice we go through the data. Each building has its strengths and areas for growth, and there's not a consistent trend as we go through. We have fourth grade reading. We've crossed that bar. One of the terms that we're using as a staff is we'd like to see an alligator mouth on top. We're trying to work on that. So here's what it looks like in terms of attainment and growth. In this case, at fourth grade, North Freedom has the highest attainment. And again, GLW has great growth, but so do North Freedom. Average growth, 3.4. As a district, our average growth was nearing seven, so almost double. Here's fifth grade reading. In terms of attainment, you can see how each building performed, and in this, this instance, East has the highest growth this time. So as I said, it is not a consistent trend. We have to look at those different grade levels and have conversations about why is that and learn from each other.
Lori?
Yes?
The growth you would attribute to our reading coaches?
I would attribute to a number of things. One, we've been working really hard on essential learning targets, and having those articulate, even though we're just nearing the, the completion of that work, it's starting to make a difference because we're all focused in on the rigor of what we're doing with our students. The literacy coaches absolutely are having an impact with their coaching and supports for intervening for students who aren't showing with their assessment data that they're making good gains. But I really attribute to the collaboration of the staff right now and really focusing on what matters for our students.
And remember that, right now, it looks a little bit different in different buildings in terms of blocks of instructional time that is geared for those interventions. We've had several staff members come and talk about that to the board, so we need to learn about what's working for interventions in our buildings, too.
Lori, do we consistently have that achievement gap in the fall?
Yes.
That deficit?
Yes.
And how do we address that?
Summer school is one area that we're going to try to address it. Right now, as we're trying, as we're closing that gap, if we can get the students above that norm line, then we want to maintain them there over the summer with summer school strategies and, you know, addressing that summer slide that all students across the country are going to have as they leave school and go into their homes. Depends on what kind of learning experiences they have in their homes or access to reading materials that would have an impact on that. So that's one approach.
But even in that norm group, there's got to be
There's a slide.
districts that don't have summer school, that don't have
Yeah.
the support at home, so.
That is correct.
So there's an achievement gap that we're seeing to start with, that we have to worry about.
That's correct. That's correct.
Lori, in any situations, have you ever seen any correlation between class size and achievement?
No, not necessarily. No.
Because, you know, some classes have bubbles in them, didn't they, where there's quite a few in that one? I forget what year class it is, but it was quite considerably larger.
Sure. I haven't seen a strong correlation there, although I will note with North Freedom, it only because that population is so small, it only takes one student really to skew the data one way or the other in comparison to the other buildings. You have to kind of keep that in mind as you're looking at the data. But really, I think high-quality instruction and the way we use our assessments is going to be more powerful than class sizes. Obviously, we want reasonable class sizes. Okay, so I'm going to jump into math, and you can see here that, again, our second graders started a little below the norm and have exceeded the growth, and so they're above the norming group here in the winter.
You've got an alligator mouth.
We have a baby alligator mouth there. And as you look at attainment, you can see that the highest attainment in this case was at North Freedom and East. And again, you can see how each elementary school compares to the district group. In terms of growth, again, GLW had significant growth, and that's why we brought a second grader in to be recognized tonight with Chastity as the teacher and also as a math coach, because we think that there's a lot of good work going there with wind time. I think that structured time for intervention really makes a significant difference, and it's a, it's a learning point for all of us across the district. The average growth was a 7.3, and you can see, again, our average growth as a district is well above that.
But regardless, they were all above the national norming.
Yes.
The GLW just went well beyond that.
Right, so they're not only closing the gap, they're exceeding growth.
Yes.
And that's what we need to do.
Yes.
Okay, and here's third grade math. Yeah, we started a little below the norm, not as much as we saw in reading, and again, we have surpassed the norms. And in terms of attainment versus growth, look at the growth at eight. Average growth, 6.4, and again, that's significant in terms of, as a district, we were well above that. There, check that. Alligator mouth out. Okay, so there's fourth grade math. I think, as you'll see, and this maybe answers a little bit more what you were asking, Sean, over time, the longer our students are in our system, Over time, the longer our students are in our system, and we do have a, a strongly articulated curriculum and we're using our assessments to respond, the longer they are, the less likely they're going to start below the norms. And here's what attainment looks like versus growth. In this case, North Freedom had the highest growth. The average growth is 4.9. And again, as a district, we're well above that. Oh, so I think I got it. Let me just jump forward. Here's fifth grade. Switch those two around a little bit. We started at the norm group and we're a little above now. And if I go back, here's our attainment versus growth. Again, exceptional growth in comparison to the norms. So you might've been asking, well, what about the middle school? We have middle school math data for you. We're still assessing in reading, so that might be something we need to bring back to you soon because we don't have that ready to share with you today. But in terms of math, sixth grade started a little below the norm and now we're above the norm. Average growth is 3.2. We're well above that as a district. Look at the growth that seventh grade made. I attribute this to a couple of things. Our math coaches have been very influential in guaranteeing learning principles across the grade level teams, talking about pacing, how do we use our instruction materials to deliver the curriculum and their focus on what are essential learning targets. Additionally, we've had increased time with the schedule this year where both in the areas of reading and in math, we have essentially double-dosed all students, which is one way to really maximize the currency we have with students to give them what they need. So what we pay attention to will change. We're paying attention to the time that students need to, to access the curriculum and learn what we want them to really know and be able to do. And it's making a difference. And if you liked the alligator mouths before, look at eighth grade.
Sean.
It is awesome. Yes.
Good.
In a word. So, um, you'll note that we have to look at how were they in spring of 11 because you may recall that the eighth graders are assessed with the Explore assessment in the fall. So we didn't measure them in the fall. So this is from spring of last year as seventh graders to winter right now as eighth graders. So again, what we pay attention to is making a difference. So we're very eager to see our reading data. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. That's what I'm going to share with you tonight.
You can applaud now. Really, we should be applauding the teachers because they put a tremendous amount of hard work and effort into this. And it, it's so satisfying for them now to see some of the results of, of the work that they've done. It's paying off.
You know, and obviously, when I look at this and, and, you know, obviously, we, in the past, sometimes we always, with No Child Left Behind, WKCE, we get focusing on a certain group. In order to get those type of growths, we have to do that across the board. We can't just say, well, this group is the one that's struggling. We're going to work on that one. Everybody has to grow in order to, to be able to get the good alligator mouth.
That's correct.
I would, I'm sorry, Molly.
It's really a paradigm shift too, because not only are our teachers really, you know, producing and delivering a, a top-notch curriculum, but the parents are supportive of the expectations we're placing on the students. And the students are reaching that bar and stepping up to the expectations we have. So it's really a, a whole community effort, I think, that we're, we're seeing the success with.
And maybe just one more thing. When we shared this data with the staff, it's very motivating. You know, I've had a number of conversations since February 15th with teachers who are like, I want to know what's going on in this other building because we want that same growth in our building and, and what can you share with me? And there's this eagerness to, because they realize that they do have an ability to make a difference with the data. And they need to have that data in front of them over and over again so that we monitor students' growth and make changes with our instruction to be responsive to student needs.
I have a caution. As wonderful as this is, and I do believe it is wonderful, and we must address the needs of, you know, our students around the issue of literacy, of reading and math, there is a cost. And I'm not talking about a financial cost. We have taken blocks of time away from what I would call whole child learning. And we must be very cautious about that. As we move to close these gaps, we have to be aware that we need to open more doors for our children to have other kinds of experiences other than just working toward, uh, this kind of very narrow and specific curriculum.
It's a balance for sure, but the, the goal is to open up all doors for all kids.
Well, again, again, because when we start talking about learning targets, those learning targets are set across the districts. Now, when we start talking about, um, Common Core and ACT Plan and Explore, those don't apply just to math and literacy. They apply to all of our, of our education. And so we need to be able to address that in learning targets. So that, uh, we're saying that when we say literacy, it can apply to social studies. It can apply to a lot of other areas, science. And so we need to be able to address these things, but then they have to translate into our ACT Plan and Explore test scores too, but in our growth of our students. So, and that's part of what we're doing in the PSCs. And obviously, Molly's even addressing that just briefly to about the parents. When we have these learning targets, they're given not only the child, but also the parents are aware of these too, correct?
In many cases.
Yeah, so, but the parents can be part of that team too. Thank you.
I, you know, Peter, I think the teachers are very sensitive to, to your concerns in that area. And we, we have had discussions about that. Where's the fun? Where's the play? Where's, because teachers are pushing kids hard right now, no doubt about it. But we have managed over a period of years to let our scores, a lot of factors that we didn't have control, but slipped down. And now we're trying to quickly close that gap. So, you know, we hope that there's a, there comes a time when there will be less need to, to push as hard as we're pushing right now.
Takes, uh, more energy to get out of the earth's atmosphere once you're out. I'm all for that. I, I just feel it's very important to recognize again, you know, our responsibilities to the whole child. That's their physical health and wellbeing, their, their, their food health and wellbeing, you know, as well as their intellectual wellbeing. They're not little brains in a tube. And we know that. And I, I'm simply asking that we keep that as a constant as we work. You know, we, we, hopefully, we will no longer have the whip of No Child Left Behind without the funding to accomplish all of these objectives.
By, by pushing these students hard, is that a bad thing?
It depends on.
Crystal?
Well, I, I think, you know, sometimes that can stress kids just like it stresses adults as well. I mean, all, we know developmentally that, that students need time to work on social skills and, and have unstructured time and playtime. So as we have discussions about particularly schedules, we want to make sure that we continue to incorporate those times into our schedule and that it's not all focused on academics. And what's appropriate at one level may not be appropriate at another as well. But I think, you know, just as our, our teachers are motivated by the success they're seeing, students are proud of the work that they're doing now too. And they're involved in establishing their own goals too. And, and that's kind of a first for our district.
Well, I was, I was, I was personally very, um, it was very rewarding last board meeting to see little Dominic, who I had an opportunity as a, as a substitute teacher to work with and to see the advances that he's made as a result of PBIS. And this is a behavioral issue that then sets the groundwork for him to be able to have the kind of academic achievement that we're hoping for. And that's a part and parcel of all of what I'm suggesting.
And one more question, question, Crystal. By pushing these students this hard, you're saying, have you seen any negative impact from the students that we're pushing them that hard?
We, we've had some comments from some teachers that they feel that their students feel more pressure than they have in the past to perform. You know, like you said, that's not always a bad thing, but we do always need to be aware of that and sensitive to that and, and balance that. I think both with our schedules and, and how we allocate that time.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for the presentation. Look forward to seeing that alligator mouth open up further next time.
Now if you hear, you hear alligator, you'll know what that is.
With the blue on top. Chopper.
I'm just staying because I'm next, I think.
Brings us to B, which is the summer school program proposal. And as you indicated, you're up first with the program offerings. And there were a number of handouts that hopefully all board members picked up.
We, I just wanted to share with you the activities that occurred to get us to where we are tonight. We had a summer school planning committee of about 20 members who would come together during our PLC time or sometimes after school. And all buildings were represented on that planning committee, including administration and also some participation from UW Baraboo, South County. And the, we started out by trying to define what is the purpose of summer school. And in doing that, we reviewed research. We looked at exemplars from other districts and we also studied the DPI guidelines. And we identified a need to address the summer slide, which, you know, Sean was, was questioning about in the previous data. We defined that the purpose of the Baraboo School District Summer School Program is to maximize student growth and achievement through accelerated, continuous, and engaging learning. And the word accelerated, we focused on quite a bit because we want to accelerate growth for students who are needing to close the gap. But we also want to grow into a summer school program that accelerates for students who need enrichment opportunities beyond what would be part of their, their grade level curriculum. We have a desire to grow this program, to offer rich enrichment opportunities for all students. Yet this year, with our focus, uh, in having limited resources to start up a summer school program, we're focusing on students that need to close the gap for this first year. We spent a lot of time on proposed structures and we surveyed ourselves to determine what would be recommendations to bring forward for you. And we drafted the summer school booklets based on all of that time together. So if you have those in front of you, I'll just highlight what's essential. Um, you have all the information otherwise in front of you. We are going to recommend to offer to run a five-week program, starting on June 11th, going to July 19th. That would be three weeks with one week off for Fourth of July, which was a huge conversation because the Fourth falls on a Wednesday, which is, um, no guarantee that we have kids on, on either side of that date. So we decided to take the week off and come back for two more weeks. So it's three weeks with one week off and then two weeks. We are proposing that there be no school on Fridays. And then of course, no school July 2nd through 6th. And the sessions would run from 8:00 AM to 11:30. Kindergarten through fifth grade, we would house at GLW. And sixth through 12th grade, we would like to house at Baraboo High School. We're trying to keep the students away from the middle school as we're working on the wall repair. Um, swimming lessons of, will continue to be offered outside of summer school at Jack Young Middle School. And we would like to offer a shuttle bus for transportation that would pick up and drop off students at East and Abe and then drop them off at GLW. So if they were secondary students, they could walk from GLW to the high school. And then after school is over, there would also be a drop-off at the Boys and Girls Club. Um, as you go through the booklet, you will see that, uh, for our elementary students, as we enroll students into the summer school program, students would attend both literacy and math sessions, not one or the other, but both. So they would enroll for the full half-day program. They'd be in school from 8:00 to 11:30. For our middle school and high school students, it would maybe that they would only come for one course or one session, or they may need to partake in both. So there's more flexibility at the secondary level based on their needs. We are looking to assess all students a $5 fee to cover supplies. And Mary's going to share in a little bit that we are also running this in conjunction with a very well-developed food service program. We're very excited about. Uh, registration, we would like to work with our parent-teacher conferences that are coming up here in the first part of March to help have conversations based on data and teacher referral, which students we would recommend to be part of our summer school extended learning classes. And in the secondary level for middle school and high school, we would probably work through our guidance offices and, and the main office to encourage students who are needing to recover some coursework to be properly then enrolled into our summer school classes at that level. Um, we are looking at running classes for K through 5 as jumpstart classes. So if you have a student who's a kindergartner, who would be referred by a teacher based on our assessment data and observations in the classroom, that they might need supplemental support and practice in literacy and/or math, we would talk to those parents then during conferences and, and hope that they would enroll their students into that class for jumpstart for first grade, getting ready for first grade. So the focus on having a positive connotation in enrolling students. In terms of the middle school and high school, we are calling the middle school classes, um, Math or Literacy Fast Forward. Again, with the focus giving the skills that maybe became gaps during the school year and teaching skills that they might need to be successful moving into their next level. At the high school level, we will be running physical skills classes, which is, is, is something we have done in the past. And so we will sustain that. But then our focus for academics would be high school English, math, and science classes. And these would be credit classes offered as credit recovery through the use of our district's Odysseyware and face-to-face meetings. And in some cases, that would be a blend where sometimes they're face-to-face instruction with the use of the computers to provide some Odysseyware instruction as well. Courses at the high school will be offered for one half-credit, which equals one semester of the high school. And I think those are the highlights in terms of the course booklets. Um, we've created a preliminary budget and we shared that out with you electronically. It is well within what our allocation was and we're, we were happy with where we fall with that. Um, the next step after tonight is we would like to, uh, start having conversations with parents then at our conferences. We've, Danny and I have already sat down and went through all of our, our MAP assessment data and our Fanta-Simpson-L reading data. And those lists have been shared out with teachers to add based on their classroom assessments so that we can target which students would most benefit from this type of support in the summer.
So, um, with the board's approval of the program, we would proceed with posting for, uh, the positions. We would not offer contracts until later in the spring when we had a better idea of what our enrollment was per grade level and, and per course area. There's always some unknowns, especially regarding special education students. Some have very specific needs, um, in terms of staff support. So that will all be built into the budget when, when we have that information.
So tonight, the, the proposal is just based upon an estimation. Do we have an estimation of the number of students?
We're, we're estimating with the physical skills class around 500 students. You can see the revenue is pretty insignificant. We charge $5 per student. Uh, that's so there's some investment in the program. Uh, in, in order to get membership and equalized aid back on those students, we can't charge a higher fee than that. Plus, our purpose is not to make money on it. It's to provide that service for the kids who need it.
Since you didn't take a breath in that entire presentation.
I'm always ready about going fast enough for you, Sean.
I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit more about credit recovery at the high school level? Because there would be, to me, a, a wide variety of needs for credit recovery. How are we going to be able to address all the different areas that are with just such a limited staff? And I know you mentioned the Odyssey program, but can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Sure.
Are they going to get the true support and the true instruction that they, they deserve and they need to get that credit back?
Absolutely. I think now more than ever in our profession, but also in our district, we have really good data on where students have had gaps in their curriculum for a level. Let's say we're looking at English 9 as an example. We can look at their performance on assessments across the school year and pinpoint what skills students really need to work on versus doing all of English 9 in, you know, five weeks.
Right.
So looking at where their skills are, the teacher would have a manageable group of students. You know, we, we don't want it to be too large that we can't differentiate for all their needs. But the beauty in using Odysseyware is that it's tailored to where those, those needs are. And so teachers can have students working face-to-face with a computer while they're supporting students and rotate students through so that they're on the computer getting instruction at their level. And then working on the skills too, with direct instruction from them that they need to close the gap. So it's not just taking our curriculum and compacting it and hope that all students carry things.
Right, because we don't want to, we don't want to make it like generic.
Correct.
That, that's the way it used to be though. You, you, you had 20 students in a, in a class and they all received the same packet. Um, that's the way that credit recovery. We didn't have the resources at that time, nor did we have the student data to be able to differentiate. So I see that we can have a very effective program. As a committee though, we talked a lot about, we wanted to make sure that we started with a small program and that we were successful with that program before we expanded into other subject areas or even the enrichment piece. So at the high school, we're still focused on English, math, and science. So at the high school, we're still focused on English, math, and science. And we have two teachers for each of those content areas. That may or may not change based on enrollment.
Sure. And then, what about data collection for the summer school program?
Yes.
Can you, are we able to attain some of that and see the results and the progress?
Absolutely. We had that conversation that we're going to track the data of our individual students because we'll have their spring data from benchmark assessments and also how they performed in their classrooms in relation to curriculum. And then we can see where their performance is in the fall in relation to their peers who didn't attend summer school. See if they maintain where they were in the spring or even grew or are they going to come back to us, hopefully not, but below, you know, below the norms again. We hope that would be the case. So we need to track that data and see...
Sure, see if they're growing faster, if they're gaining more points, if they're...
You got it.
Okay.
So if a child's failing and they take summer school, does this mean they pass?
Only if they would, only if they would successfully complete the coursework over the summer that they needed to. It wouldn't be a guaranteed pass.
And you think five weeks would be enough? If they couldn't get it in a semester or two semesters, you think five weeks it's going to...
Our past programs were four to six weeks. And that's when they didn't differentiate for students. They all received, you know, the same packet of material that covered the whole course. This way, we can take areas of math and we can specifically pinpoint and address those areas that that individual student needs. So I think more than ever, this year, we'll be in a better place than we have been in past years with summer school.
Aren't we kind of doing that now with math coaches and stuff like that throughout the year?
We're trying to be proactive rather than reactive with a summer school program. But, you know, the data shows that we still have students who aren't performing where they need to be. So I think, again, it goes back to let's evaluate the program. Let's collect data before summer school, after summer school, and determine what the effectiveness of the program is.
Do we have any concerns about being overwhelmed at the elementary level in particular? I'm just looking at the easy coordination of kid stop in a summer school program and now we're going to be, I mean, and now we're going to be feeding everybody, which is wonderful. I see an opportunity for a lot of families to take advantage of this program.
Absolutely. And our dream as a summer school planning committee was to have that. You know, we wanted to have as many kids as possible.
I'm thinking a gym load of kids.
Right.
You're talking a classroom, I'm thinking of a gym load.
It's not a daycare program. So that's why we are targeting kids that meet certain data requirements. They have to be eligible with the data. It can't be a parent coming forward and saying, "I know my students are selling in every area, but I want them to go to summer school." We also want to maintain manageable class size numbers for those students, for those...
I didn't want to call it a concern because I guess it would be nice to be overwhelmed.
We thought about that, too.
Right. And actually, as we were planning forward, knowing that we were going to have to somehow limit how many kids could come, which is not a fun thing to do. We would like to have as many come in. I called DPI and asked, "How do we proceed, knowing that we can't have all students come who would like to come and participate, that we have to start limited at first?" And that's where we were given the guidance to have some prerequisites about who can be eligible and who cannot be eligible for summer school. So it's going to be strictly based on our assessment data and teacher referral.
I should point out, too, that summer school is open to any students residing in our school district who meet this criteria. That includes homeschool students, parochial students, students who have opened and rolled out. But what we will have to do, if parents come forward and make that request, is assess those students to see if they do indeed meet the criteria.
Summer school isn't mandatory, is it?
No.
No, when you, excuse me, when you're talking four or five weeks, but I'm looking at this, unless I'm looking wrong, it says total hours, like 54. Is that over four or five weeks or is that...
It's over the five weeks and it depends on which person you're looking at. Is, are you looking at the budget there, Ed?
No, I'm looking at fiscal year 2011-12, where it says four and a half hours a day, total of 54 hours.
That's correct.
You're talking about four or five weeks, I'm wondering how...
I have one...
It's because it's split between two fiscal periods because summer school will start before July 1st and then it also picks up again after July 1st. So you actually have two sheets here that shows the whole comprehensive five weeks. So that's just the part that goes from June to July. And then the next page shows July to August.
We just broke that down for ease of the budget, handling the budget.
Jim, would there be any problems with Pat and his summer maintenance on these schools here with the students in there or scheduling or is that...
I can answer that.
Yeah.
I've met with Pat, actually. It was a great conversation. He has been very flexible and GLW will obviously get most use. But he's willing to work within our calendar to still prep the school and make sure it's ready for the start of the school year. In terms of the high school, we're going to keep all of our classes in just one wing where it's air-conditioned. They all will fit in that one nice spot. So the rest of the building can be cleaned and prepped for the rest of the school year or for the start of the school year.
Laurie, in addition to the focus here, are there, are we considering other kinds of opportunities for summer sessions which may be paid for by parents and sponsored by teachers for our quote gifted and talented? You know, there are so many programs that can come in or be provided for our, for our students that are looking to excel. And as we're doing this program for our children who need that additional help, I hope that we're thinking also about...
Absolutely.
Something outside of that and separate. Eventually, they'll all come together.
Absolutely.
But even for, even for next year or this year or this summer?
We started talking before we even got to the booklets. We put everything on the table. And a lot of things that came up were like, "Let's do a Lego League. Let's do STEM. Let's do world language at the elementary level. Let's create a theater group." All those things were put on the table, really exciting opportunities. And then we had to be realistic. We have to start small and be successful and grow into that. So in terms of this summer, no, we're not looking to do that. Although I'll remind you that Baraboo, UW Baraboo and Sau County was with us through this process. And they have an interest too in supporting what we're doing. They do offer a number of enrichment opportunities. It is at a fair expense, then $5 a student. But we also don't have an interest as a district to compete. And so we're working with them to look at what are some opportunities moving forward that we can grow our summer school program.
And some of our teachers, and some of our teachers even teach up at that program at UW. So it's not just, it's not a school district-sponsored program, but they're up there teaching.
It's been six or seven years since we've offered a summer program of any kind. And so we had to really start from the bottom up with everything. And so, again, it goes back to we want to start small, make sure we're successful. And then we do certainly plan to expand that, most definitely.
Okay, Laurie, I have another couple of questions. Maybe I'm confused, probably am. I see it says 12 days for 2011-12 summer school. Then I look back here on the last page where the calendar is.
Okay.
June 2012 is 4/8/12. Those are 12 days you're talking that are blacked in or colored in?
Well, some of those, those black days, if I'm following you correctly, go into August because of physical skills class? Because the physical skills class is going to run longer than five weeks?
But it says June 2012, the very top chart.
Mm-hmm.
Those are 12 days that are blacked in?
That's correct. Those are the 12 days that you're seeing on that first fiscal chart, yep.
Okay. Then the 2, 4, 6, 8 days down in July and August, that's for 2013?
That's the 12, 13 fiscal year, yep. Yep, you're right, yep.
I think what he's referencing is if you look at July, it's not the, the, the week after the Fourth of July, the 9th...
It's not colored. I don't think it ran off, right?
It's not colored.
So that's, that's why it's...
That's why it's confusing, yep.
I would assume that there's been discussion, and I'm sure there's been discussion with the first student because it looks like you've got one bus running here. Well, if we're going to have 500 kids, obviously, we're not looking at a lot of them riding the bus.
Right.
But I would assume we have contingency plans, if there is a lot of use of the bus, to have another bus. And I don't know what the requirement is of having the bus.
Sure. And Jim would be the person who's been in contact with her student, but there would be...
We're basing it on past practice. And about 150 of these students are going to be with the physical skills class. So those kids are going to be driving. They're going to be coming here and involved in different kinds of activities.
They should be running here if they're...
And running. They should be running. We have parents dropping off kids early for kid stop in the morning even before summer school starts. We have kids staying for the wraparound kid stop afterwards. So, you know, we'll, we'll have to...
That first week will be around, yes.
Part of the registration, you'll notice, we have very specific questions. Transportation, my child will walk to and from summer school. A parent or the student will drive to and from school. I will utilize the shuttle bus to summer school. I will utilize the shuttle bus after. So we're asking very specific questions on there so that we can determine how many kids we will have on that bus.
Well, $50 of run, because it's two runs a day at $100 a day, two runs a day at $50 a day, $100 for the shuttle bus. I'm not suggesting it's not worthwhile. I just, I mean, I guess I can't answer the question because nobody can answer the question of how many kids are on that bus.
We felt it was a really important thing, component of our summer school because we want to be able to have all students access it. And we don't want the fact that they live on one side or the other side of town to keep them from participating in the program. During middle school, I know in past years, we had a lot of kids ride bikes. And, you know, I see that that will probably continue. So we're really primarily looking at the elementary level.
I have one more question, Laurie.
Sure.
I see in this chart, we're supposed to be teaching in school from 8 to 11:30, correct?
Correct.
So that's three and a half hours.
That's correct.
Are we paying staff for four and a half hours in this?
That's correct. They need prep time. They need an hour of preparation and planning time.
It's based on past practice for summer school. We provided four hours prior to the start of summer school as well as one hour of prep for every four hours of instruction. So that's how we came up with that model. It's based on past practice. And what we're going to be asking teachers to do this year, which is different from previous years, is to collect that data. And it's going to be very specifically geared to that individualized instruction from the data. So there'll probably be more prep in this year than we have in previous years.
Hey Laurie, depending on your data that you get back then, you'll be offering more for the middle school end?
Right, I think we'll have to be responsive to what our data shows us, right.
So if a kid is, well, let's just say a child in seventh grade is doing bad in science, there's nothing here offered for, right?
Right, right.
So what is there options?
Right. At this time, we're just starting with reading and math. So that would be absolutely a fabulous thing to do is work into science and social studies along with some of those enrichment opportunities that Peter was talking about.
Well, this is my concern is that if you have a group of teachers such as the high school teachers that collaborated on physics and chemistry and, you know, advanced math class, part of summer school education can be teachers creating classes for various segments of students and charging for their services with the school simply providing a facility while these other activities are going on. That was my only point for us to consider. I understand who you may have certain things and there are other, there are other venues in town. But certainly, I think we want to have our stamp and offer to our teachers opportunities to do these things that might be a little bit outside of this particular piece. That's my only thought.
All of that takes a great deal of coordination and a lot of details and a lot of planning. And so it goes back to we can do it all right away. We really need to build on this, obviously, looking at those other core content areas, looking at other graduation requirements. You know, health is a, is a graduation requirement, some of those other pieces. We certainly want to build those in. But we don't want to have chaos this first year where things have slipped through the cracks. And we have a lot of administrators that are helping to oversee that summer program this year, too. So we want to make sure that we've got our hands wrapped around what we are offering now.
This is just step one.
This is step one.
Final, final question for me is should we or have we include costs associated with the technology support that you're going to need for this?
Such as...
Well, I don't know. Can all the teachers walk in and turn on the computers and everything's going to be loaded and ready to go and they don't need any support? Is that how it'll work? Is it, do we need...
We'll have adequate staff here through the summer in our technology department. In the past, there wasn't a need for a lot of support, although I think I remember, Molly, if I'm not wrong, that we had, we had a couple of computer lab assistants or, you know, helping. But really, this, this, I think we've done so much training that the majority of our teachers that we hire for the summer program will be able to handle it. And we are building in a couple educational assistants, too, for help with supervision and those kinds of things.
From a standpoint of action from the board, what do you need to move forward here?
You want to hear Mary's presentation first?
Sure.
And wrap it all together and...
Sure.
Okay. Well, I've been here before to talk about the idea of having a summer food service program. And now that with the potential of having summer school, we have a little bit more firm numbers and things to look at, hopefully to have a successful program. But just to give a quick synopsis for those of you that may not know what, what this is. Basically, the DPI has approached us because we have more than one school. All you need is one school in your district that would have 50% or more of the students eligible for free reduced-price meals. Last year, we had one, this year we have three. And the schools are GLW, West, and AVE.
Mary, I don't mean to intrude. Could you just repeat that so we're all very conscious of that piece of data? That our need to feed our students has increased from one school to three schools?
Yes.
That's a snapshot of the challenges of our economy, of our parents, and of the struggle and of the school districts' attempt to meet those challenges.
Correct, yes. We, I mean, definitely the free reduced percentage has increased considerably in our district over the years as other districts have because of the, have because of the economy. I don't have each school broke down and bring the data in front of me. But we currently, AVE is the highest percentage. We have around 65% of the students at that school are receiving free reduced-price meals. And district-wide, right now, we're at about 44%. So that's, that kind of gives you an overview, but it keeps creeping up. I mean, I've worked here for over 20 years. When I first started here, the percentage was probably, district-wide is probably around 17 or 18%, and now we're at 44%. So that's the difference, you know, that's a huge difference.
I would contend that's not creeping up, but leaping up. Three years ago, at West, we had 25% of our rate. Now we're over 50%. It doubled in the last three years.
Well, as you know, I have said that the schools are the final bastion for in loco parentis. And this is an example of what we must do as a community to ensure the fact that when safety nets start to fall apart, our children aren't lost.
So, and then, and then the other option you have is so you could pick one of those, one of the eight, the school that has 50% or more free reduced, that can be what they consider to be a serving site. And then you can also have another site, which would be the closest preschool or middle school. So in our case, what we're looking at this year is to be in conjunction with summer school and that would be at GLW, feeding at GLW and then feeding here at the high school. Now, you might say to yourself, "Well, those schools are pretty close to each other." But again, we want to start out, be successful and be where the kids are. And we're also going to be running some, I'll get into that, but running at some days when summer school won't be going on so we can get a feel for how many from the community will come and so forth. So anyway, that, and then basically, just to get back to number one, any person in our, in our area, they don't even have to be in our town. They just have to be in our community area that is 18 or under can come here and eat for free. Everyone's free. There is no taking applications or anything like this. Every single, every single person 18 years or under would be free. It's a federally funded program. And then adults could come and eat if they were bringing their kids in or something and that they would be at a, at a minimal charge.
So even if they're not students that get to eat free, huh?
Yeah, if they're 18 or under, yep. And so, like I said, what we're proposing is to have our sites be GLW and the high school because that's where the summer school kids would be. And we would run the program, we would actually run Monday through Friday. We would start, we would be, we would be running all the days that the summer school would go. But we would go on Fridays in addition. And so basically, we would run from, from June 11th until July 27th. And we would only be closed one day, that would be the Fourth of July. So we would be, we kind of wanted to have some consistency here for those that were needing to come in for the meals and so forth. So they would be here even on the days when there wasn't summer school going on. There'd be kid stop going on, I think, on all these days except for the Fourth of July as well. So we'd have a certain number of kids. That was our fear last year. We wanted, you know, we were, we were definitely eligible for it. We were afraid, would we get the numbers? Everything was so unknown. But at least now we have some numbers that we can kind of draw to, to kind of have, at least be confident that we can run a successful program. Anyway, the, and also the reason we'd be bringing people in on the non-school days... days is because, like, like I said, we can get a feel for how many would come from the community, and then maybe next year, as the summer school will be looking to expand, we also will be looking to expand, and possibly, even if there wasn't summer school classes at AVE, we could have that be a site as well, maybe for lunch, because it would be on the other side of town. Obviously, that's where our highest percentage of free reduced is, and that would make a lot of sense. So, but again, we're starting small, because we want to succeed, and then grow from there. Kind of predicted number of meals, just, this is just an estimate, you know, the kid stop attendance, they tell me it's usually about one twenty-five a day. The number I was using for summer school attendance was three hundred, but I know that there'll be some other kids there for some of the physical training parts of it. So, we're just estimating that we would serve around four twenty-five, four hundred twenty-five meals a day, and for breakfast, with these two numbers, and then lunch would be about five twenty-five. Now, these are, I'm, I'm just expecting all the kids from summer school and kid stop to eat, only because it's free, I don't know why they wouldn't eat, you know? And then, I'm also expecting a hundred additional from the community, just a guess, to be coming in. We will be encouraging them to come to the high school, those that are coming from the community, as opposed to GLW, just because of what was talked about before. You know, there's going to already be kid stop kids there, and there's going to be, you know, all the, the, the summer school kids, younger children, as opposed to older kids up here at the high school. And so, and there's more space. I mean, the cafeteria has a lot more space than, than it does down at GLW. So, that's, you know, we can't make them go to one side or the other, but we will encourage them to try to do that. Okay, then, and of course, on the non-summer school days, we expect our numbers to be smaller, but we really don't have any idea. And you might be saying to yourself, well, how are we going to plan for this, as far as number of, you know, how, how will you know? Because, you know, during the course of the school year, we have a pretty good idea of how many meals we're going to serve each day. We get counts in from the elementary schools, and then we can use sort of educated guess, you know, because if we're serving, you know, too many casserole or pizza, we know there's more kids eating on, on one day than the other. So, you know, we can use those numbers to get a good, close numbers of how many meals we'll serve. This is going to be sort of up in the air, especially in the first two weeks. So, our, our contingency plan would be, you know, we'd have the set menu, and we'll do a hot meal, for the most part, basically like we do now, and, and we have to meet all the same requirements, as far as, as far as what needs to be involved in, you know, nutritionally in the menu and stuff for the kids, federal regulations. And so, what we'll kind of have on the back burner, probably to start with, is some cold cuts and bonds and things like that, so we can, you know, all of a sudden, you know, the first day, we have seven hundred people show up, you know, we're going to have to be able to handle this. So, you know, it's going to be a little scary at first, obviously, but, you know, we certainly, we'll kind of be ready for additional if we need to. We don't have, don't want to have too much waste, but yet, we want to make sure there's enough food for everybody. So, the reimbursement rates, breakfast, we would get a dollar eighty-eight per meal, that's ba, these are based on last year's numbers, I don't have this year's numbers yet. And lunch, we would get three twenty-nine per meal that we would serve. As far as staffing goes, I'm just, not, we're just kind of, I mean, I, I want to start small, if I need, I mean, I'm going to have people, the first couple of days, extra people around, just to see how busy we are, and then, you know, if, you know, they'll be sort of on the idea that they may or may not have a job, and others will be set. But my prediction is that we have four staff a day at GLW, with additional help from kid stop and summer school staff for supervision, especially during the actual eating time. And same thing at the high school. And now, if we ever run out of, you know, if we, if we're really running tight, Crystal has volunteered to do dishes, she says she's really good at that.
Yeah, she was going to grab Kevin on the way, too.
Anyway, and then, you know, and then I would be directing the program. I will be going to some training on March ninth. I did go again last year as well, but just to, there's a lot of paperwork involved, as always with the government. And so, because we have to track things, and we have to make sure that people aren't over eighteen, that they have to eat the meal on sight, they can't, you know, take the apple, shove it in their pocket, and the sandwich, and leave, because we don't know what they're doing with that. They might be taking it to their parent or something, but it's designed for children, obviously, so that's, that's why they have those rules. We need to actually submit an application for this by April thirteenth. And so, just a number nine, in my, in my little outline here, I expect that we, that our total income for, for a day would be around twenty-five, twenty, two thousand five, two thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars, and we expect our expenses to be twenty-three fifty, so we would expect to make a little bit of money. Of course, these are all contingent on how many meals we actually serve. You know, I mean, we can, our labor wouldn't change a whole lot, we can, you know, add on, you know, additional meals quite a bit, but, you know, we can't go below a certain number of people to serve, because we kind of need X number of hands to, to serve a meal, if there's a hundred people or four hundred people. So, anyway, that's kind of an overview of it. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that you're, you're looking at serving breakfast starting at seven?
Oh, yeah, I don't have, I don't think I wrote the times. We, we're going to serve breakfast from, I believe, seven thirty to eight, is that right? Yeah, seven thirty to eight, and we've actually, I've also worked with Pat Gavin with Kid Stop.
Staggered kids.
And so, we would kind of, like at GLW, we would, we would serve the breakfast to the, the, the summer school kids first, and then we would serve the kid stops kids second.
Okay.
And then, here at the high school, we would go like seven, it would, to the public, we might say seven thirty to eight, but we would actually go beyond that, to, to be in conjunction with some of the plans for the kids that are here for athletics and stuff like that. So, we would certainly be open, we will serve as long as we need to. I mean, I know we have things written...
But we just want to make sure that we serve the summer school kids first, so that they're able to get on the shuttle bus and get back to their site.
And the same thing goes after, you know, eleven thirty to twelve is what's written in, in there for, for, for lunch.
If you can serve five hundred meals in a half an hour, I want to come every day and watch.
Well, we have two sites to start with.
All right, two hundred and fifty in a half.
I mean, we, we serve two hundred and fifty, three hundred at East School, and, and we do it in...
And I've seen that setup, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Question is that, this, obviously, we talked about this last year, and this isn't the only place in the country that's doing it. Have you checked other sites to see, okay, this is what walks in off from the street?
Yeah, I have gone to several other school districts, and the, the one that does, that does it the best is in Adams Friendship, because there's a high need, there's a lot of, a lot of free reduced in that, in that community. And they've been doing it for like probably twenty years, they've been doing summer, summer school, or summertime program, feeding, feeding programs. And they actually go out to about eighteen different sites and serve. I mean, they actually take this on the road.
Oh, wow.
And they go to, I mean, of course, it's been over time as they've grown like this, but...
Sure.
They, they, they do it in their school as well, because they have summer school, but then they actually go to like, like trailer parks and things like this. There's certain rules and regulations as, as far as that goes, but there has to be like a covered area with tables for the kids, but you can bring it to them, too, you know, so. But as far as people coming in from the community, most of the places I've visited didn't have much of that, but most of these schools are kind of out in the, out in the boonies, sort of, whereas we're right, kind of right town. And, I mean, it seems like our community is sort of excited about this, or they are sort of, you know, like embracing it. And, I mean, I've already had some calls from some, some different groups that do things over the vacations and things, to help feed kids when there isn't any school programs going on, and they're excited about it, they want to get the word out there, the food pantry, things like that. So, you know, I, I don't know that we're going to be different from other communities, but, but I do think that if it's promoted correctly, and, you know, you get enough people that are interested, we, you know, we will get those coming in from the community. So, but that, again, that's just a guess. You know, that's a part of the reason why we didn't want to just do it last year, without at least having some base number of kids here to, to draw from.
Okay, good.
And then, can adults pay for a meal?
Yes, yep, and that'll probably be like, they'll probably be like three dollars. And then, you know, so, for instance, I mean, just throwing it out there, I mean, a person could have a daycare in their home with five kids in it, and they could cart them all over here, and they could all be, all the children could be fed for free, and the adult might pay the three dollars and eat along with them, so.
So, Mary, basically, what you're saying, the more successful this thing is, the less costs are associated with it, right?
You mean, start to the district?
Right, I mean, well, you know, I just...
Hopefully, there, there won't be any costs to the district, you know?
Right, but for people out there that's trying to get a handle on this right now, if it's, if it's fully utilized and stuff like this, so you, the facilities around here, that it's actually more efficient in the cost.
Right, yep.
And this isn't any kind of program that has to be signed up or regular attendance, you can walk in any day of the week?
Yep.
Come and go, you can come on a Tuesday and show up next Thursday, or come three days a week.
Which is why it's sort of scary for us, because we're not really used to that. You know, but, but we, we certainly, I think, will learn to accommodate it, and I think we'll see trends, you know, as far as, you know, different, and, and of course, we'll publish the menus, and then they'll know what's coming, although I don't know that that'll matter, because I think some of these people will be coming, no matter what the menu is, because they, they want to eat, you know? And so, you know, so that, that, that won't matter. But I think that, you know, like, for instance, we're going to be running it on days when there isn't summer school, so we'll see just how many actually come in for that. But, yeah, it'll be a little, it'll be a little hard for us to forecast, but once we get around two weeks under our belt, I think that we'll have a better handle on it.
Sure. Mary, do you have a marketing or promotion plan for this to be shared with the community? Brian?
Yeah, of course, we'd hope it to go into the newspaper, and, and we will definitely, you know, the, the, this one particular group, the gentleman called, and he asked what they could do to help, and I said, well, help us promote it, you know, to put the word out there. Of course, we'll get involved with the food pantry, they'll have, I mean, there's actually flyers that we can put up, go door to door. I mean, there's different, all different marketing tools that the DPI already has set up for this, that we can use and facilitate to our, you know, we can have things going out in newsletters, you know, towards like the last couple of months of school, to the parents and stuff, so they would know this would be going on, the school would serve and stuff. So, yeah, we'll definitely be marketing it to the best of our ability, you know, so that we, so people know that it's out there, and they can use it if they want to, you know?
In future years, we'd like to collaborate with the Boys and Girls Club as well. Again, we're going to kind of start small this year and make sure it's successful, but that's an important group, too, because they have quite a large attendance in the summer.
So, we could do like, if we do an Adams Friendship, we could actually take meals there, and we could serve the meals there, so, I mean, that would be an option. But, yeah, we wanted to start out small, so we'd succeed and then build from there, so.
So, your goal, then, is to break even, no matter how many people you serve?
Right.
Do you...
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we really don't want to be rolling in all kinds of money here with it. We want to, you know, we want to, you know, we want to use as much of the money as we can to, you know, to put towards the food and so forth. And obviously, we have some labor costs and so, and things like that, but we, we're not here to make money with this program, we're just here to offer something to the students that would be coming in for summer school, and then to our community.
And I don't lose money there?
No.
The district funds this first, right, and then we get reimbursed by the federal government, by the local people?
Uh, yeah, well, yes, just like we do with our regular program, we, we get a reimbursement every, we would get a, at the end of the month, we would claim a reimbursement, and then they would give us the money after we've already served the meals.
Are there any nutrition guidelines for the program itself?
Yeah, same as they are during the regular school year.
Okay.
You know, we have to have certain components in the meal, and fat content, and all those different things. In fact, those are changing daily, you know, so we, we definitely have to comply with those, just like we do during the school year. The DPI will come in at the beginning, or I think before we get started, and overview, make sure we're doing it right. And then, they probably drop in sometime during the first year, just to make sure things are going, you know, that we're not just handing out meals to everybody that comes in, and not monitoring things like we should be, so.
The piece that's probably going to be less time intensive, though, is we don't need to scan individual student names, or collect fees, or any of that, it's just a mere count of, of students eighteen and under.
Are there opportunities for local providers to work with the program? Food providers?
You mean, like donations or something?
No, no food.
The Siskos and the Pierces?
Beyond the Siskos and the local, more local providers.
I see you're saying, like, local purchasing, things like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we certainly can work with those, especially that, since we're around, I mean, you know, the school year, it's not as, as easy to, you know, go organic and buy things that, that would be locally produced, because obviously, they're not being produced in this time of year, you know, in most places. But, you know, in the summer, that's the growing months, you know, we may not be able to capture some of that, more so than we do during the rest of school year.
Well, I'm also thinking, we have meat markets that are local providers, and, you know, wherever there is an opportunity to support the economic well-being of the community, we should pay attention to that, not just our Siskos, as important as they are.
Sure.
I would entertain a motion to approve the summer school program proposal as presented, including the busing and the food program.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Viedro, segmented by Cummings. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
And...
Thank you.
Everybody involved. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled PLC Outcomes, and for that, I'm going to turn to the principal of the high school, Mr. Los, which, you have a couple of presenters with you tonight?
I certainly hope so.
All right.
Well, actually, can we start with the middle school?
Yes.
Going to start with the middle school? Okay, works for me.
We have Brian Matoon and Karen Messner here to talk about some of the work they've done during the PLC time.
Hi, Karen Messner. Brian's passing out copies of our essential learning targets. A work in progress. We've been working on these this year during PLC time. We kind of have started before this with science, because we've written our own curriculum over the last fifteen years, so we've kind of gone by it, this process, a little bit differently than some of the other curriculum in the district that have had a block, and then tried to say, okay, we, we have chapter three, and we have chapter four. We've kind of figured out from the beginning, this is what we want kids to know in science, this is how we're going to assess them, this is how we're going to teach them, so that we can focus our instruction on what we think are the most important things in science, and then concentrate on those, so that our curriculum isn't, as they always say, a mile wide and an inch deep. So, kids really learn what we want them to learn, the core ideas. In science, it's a little bit different than other subjects, too, because not only do we have our core ideas, the things we want kids to know, but we also have things that we want kids to be able to do, those scientific practices, to be able to actually do science, the methods, and to know about the nature of science. So, we've included those in here also, as well as our different units, and the major things we want students to know in each of the units that we cover. The, I'm really fortunate to be able to work with absolutely fantastic middle school science department. We work very, very well together, and we've had time during team planning to work with grade levels, but PLC time has given us time to work sixth, seventh, eighth grade. We've worked with the high school science department during that time, and then on the day between semesters, when kids weren't here, we got together K through twelve, and that is the first time in my twenty-three years here that I've ever remembered getting together with everybody to talk about what to do in science. So, that's been really important, and especially with high school, too. We haven't gotten with the high school science department for quite a few years, it's, it's been a long time. So, it's been very, very valuable to see across the grade levels how these work. these work.
She talks, talks very, very fast. You know, as you look at these, one of the things I just want to point out, it is a work in progress. I know as, um, I worked with Craig Phillips, he created, we're the, um, the science aid in the back, and one of the things we noticed is we're starting to come up with our assessments and aligning our assessments. We do have to fine tune the wording, the verbiage, to make sure that everything aligns with, with our passage well, so this by no means is a finished product, and, and having the lens dates to work in PLC has been really, really important. Without that, we would not be where we are with this product today.
And there are new science standards that are being written right now, hopefully they should be out at the beginning of next year. These are aligned with the current state standards, which are incredibly vague and nebulous, um, but the new ones will be much, much more specific, and so we'll be looking at those and trying to figure out, um, how to align what we do with the new standards when they come out, and, um, will almost for certain be adopted by the state with that.
Quick question on that, Karen, have we seen any advanced copies on that?
I have.
Okay, well, good for you.
But I, I lose sight of confidentiality, I can't tell you the thing.
But, I mean, so, would some of these, obviously, you can't tell us.
Right. There are many things in here that we will be able to use when we align what we do with, um, the new standards that are coming out.
So, next year, when we get the grand release or whatever, then we won't be necessarily having to reinvent the wheel.
We may have to switch some things around-
Good.
-with, um, different grade levels. K through five, and I can tell you a few things, K through five are grade specific, so in grade five, you will teach these concepts and they will be tied to these specific scientific practices, and you will also bring in these big cross-cutting, um, disciplines, and six, seven, and eight, you can teach the, the concepts within any grade level at this point, that could change in the future too, same with, with nine through twelve, um, you can teach them at any time, um, but again, that could change.
And one of the other changes that are happening, what's happening at the high school, we've been very responsive with the high school teachers, trying to move some of their concepts that would have been taught at the ninth grade to having a doubt in some middle schools, making sure that kids still get those concepts, that they're, still have the opportunity to learn them, so that we're making sure all of our gaps are being filled.
Um, one of the things that, um, the waiver is talking about, and of course, is that we're going to be expanding, uh, we've already talked about that, but we may be mandated by the state as to expand our science credits. Um, is this, hopefully we'll accommodate that so that we'll be able to have our students ready to be able to handle the additional rigor that's gonna be required on this?
Yeah, I think it will. Um, with the new standards, I don't think, and other people that work them, I don't think you can get them done in two years, I think we will need more time, and as you probably know, the, um, upping of the graduation requirements does need legislative approval, so that will have to go through that whole process too.
Yes.
Which we know is what we'll have to do.
Well, I believe it'll go through, they might not give us any more money for it, but they'll, they'll approve it.
Yeah, locally, we can make those decisions.
Yes, and we can still make those decisions even without the state directive, and I believe that's the direction we're going.
And, and that's where we're, that's where we're headed, because not only does it affect science, it also affects math.
Yes.
And so, there'll be a proposal that you'll be seeing sometime in here, if you try to imagine, open by June.
Mm-hmm.
They'll outline a recommendation for increasing the graduation requirements for Maryville High School and some ways to accommodate those specific changes, so stay tuned for that.
Good.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with regards to the high school, much of what was already, you know, explained with regards to, to, um, you know, the ongoing PLC time spent on essential learning targets, the high school's been doing much of the same, and we're not quite as far as the middle school is with regards, uh, to getting those done, but we're making some, some significant progress and we'll have those completed by the end of the school year. I think certainly the time that we have to collaborate with the middle school has been incredibly useful. Um, I would echo, um, the sentiments made about the time that we had back in January to meet K-12, it was the first time that the districts had a chance to do that in quite some time. Um, I had a chance to witness it in other districts, I think it's incredibly valuable, I think our staff ought to be valuable, and, and really, you know, what better way to know what's taking place within, uh, your colleagues' classrooms and other buildings than sit down and talk about that? Otherwise, what we tend to hear unfortunately sometimes is, is, well, you know, we did that last year, we did that in sixth grade, or whatever, and so there's this overlap that exists, and certainly if there's overlap where things are being repeated in grades, then there's more likely gonna be some gaps as well, where, you know, content has not been addressed. So, I think the fact that our staff's had the opportunity during that PLC time to get together, meet, talk, uh, have dialogue, digest, and rearrange curriculum and identify gaps and fill those gaps has been incredibly powerful. Um, for us also at the high school, it's also been beneficial about that, and you have a, kinda, I believe, a copy of the information, you know, that's been provided to you, um, you know, we've also talked a lot about, about best grading practices, because one of the things that we want to try to make sure we do here at the high school level is to make sure that the grades that we provide to our students are actually indicative of their academic performance, and so that means one of the things we're looking at doing next year is to separate their, the student citizenship grade from their academic grade, and this isn't the first time you've heard this, but we've worked specifically on that, you'll be seeing something not too distant in the future that identifies the elements of behavior that we're looking at separating from the academic grade, so that when a student receives a grade in biology or receives a grade in, in English or history, it's indicative of what they know and are able to do. It's not about their responsibility or whether or not they turn things on, on time and so forth, those things are important, no question about it, but that's not a reflection of what they know and are able to do, it's a separate type of, of skill that they have that needs to be recorded separately. So, we've worked very diligently, diligently with regards to that, uh, we spent a lot of time, uh, taking a look at the impact of, of, um, grading practices with regards to a hundred point scale and how impactful zeros can be on things like that, and we've talked about, as, as remember what we discussed a couple of months ago, the LADE system and some attempts to try to, to deal with some, some inaccuracies with respect to our grading practices, um, you know, if a student gets a zero because, you know, uh, teacher A doesn't take late work and teacher B across the hall does take late work, and that does happen in situations, now the grades that the two students get are not reflective of what they truly know and are able to do. One just happened to do it in a timely fashion, one was a day late, and so we want to make sure that the grades that the students receive is accurate of what they know and are able to do, and so we talked about the impacts of zeros, we talked about the impact of extra credit, you know, situations where, you know, the, the staff provide extra credit for bringing in boxes of Kleenex, okay, and that's great, that we want to make sure that we're, you know, being, you know, have good hygiene and so forth in our classrooms, but does that box of Kleenex, which results in ten points extra credit, really describe what that student is able to do in health class? Okay, and I would contend that it doesn't, and best practice would contend that it doesn't, yet those are some things that still unfortunately happen to us now that we're trying to educate our staff on trying to, to eradicate. Um, PBIS, and, and I'm sure Melissa could go on and on about this, um, but PBIS is something you've heard plenty about before, Glenn talked about it at great lengths and it's having great impact at the elementary level, middle school's on board with that now, we're in the process of setting the foundation here at the high school, implement PBIS starting next year, uh, we have a team that's been going through a variety of trainings, we'll complete that training process this year, um, the internal coaches are working very diligently, trying to formulate, uh, what it's, what our first task is gonna be and our first behavior that we want to try to address and work upon and improve upon here, uh, and it sounds like at this point in time, that's gonna be tardiness, we have plenty of data-
On-time behavior.
Plenty, plenty of data that suggests that we need to work on, encourage our students to be on time, and we'll continue to move, uh, in that particular direction, and interestingly enough, many of the high schools that we've talked to are in similar situations with regards to timeliness, uh, and we're certainly a little different with regards to that. Uh, we've also spent some time addressing, uh, literacy, uh, we've got some different things in place on that, Melissa's been spearheading a group that, uh, is working with some of our, our students who struggle the most right now during our homeroom time, so we've been able to use the data that we've done through our, our E-Pass testing program, identify students who are struggling, um, and we've communicated with parents and they had the right to either opt their stu-, in or out of the program, but now the students are receiving very, uh, one, almost one-on-one attention from either a reading specialist or some of our English teachers to get the help they need to try to close that gap between where their reading skills are now and where they need to be, and that's in addition to our Read 180 program, and so again, this is a program that's evolved based upon the use of assessment data that we've gotten from, you know, E-Pass, and we had Phil Daniels from ACT that joined us back, uh, earlier this year and helped identify some ways to interpret that data and utilize it to help target interventions, so that's been beneficial as well. Uh, you've heard about the LADE system, there's no question about that, we did mention, uh, just a short time ago, graduation requirements, we have been studying that to a great extent, we have some guidance that's come out of the, uh, the, uh, framework that's come from the state for the waiver to opt out of No Child Left Behind, uh, we're actually ahead of that game in terms of our conversations about that, we recognize that graduation requirements are, uh, low, to say the very least, uh, right now, we're one of the lowest credit requirements for graduation in the Badger Conference, that information's not really new to you, I'm sure that we've did before, proposal we're gonna bring forward is gonna put us near the top of the Badger Conference with regards to graduation requirements. That's gonna require some conversations about our seventh period day and whether or not that's gonna be able to, to accommodate the, the changes that we're recommending, and again, I'll be providing that information to you here later this spring. Um, so that's just a snapshot of some of the things, it's not an all-inclusive list of what we've been working on here at the high school, uh, but as you've heard from other people, you know, here tonight and in weeks past, um, without that, that block of time that we've had available to us on a Wednesday afternoon, so we would not be able to accomplish nearly a fraction of what we've done up to this point, and so it would just take us longer to reach, to get to the point where we meet the needs of our kids, and quite frankly, the kids who are in the system right now can't wait.
I have some questions regarding the scheduling, and, uh, I actually got two questions, first, regarding the literacy, uh, and obviously, we have a literacy coach now and staff in the high school, they're working across the curriculum, correct, with all of our teachers?
Right.
And so that they're able to, so when we have a literacy coach, the literacy, it's not just the responsibility of the literacy coach, it's actually the responsibility of all the teachers to increase the literacy throughout there, because there's obviously a difference with reading, um, War and Peace in terms of reading a science text, and so, um, what are we doing in those areas? I mean, I think I've got a brief thing here.
We just, we just actually, uh, let's see, this thing was two weeks ago now, we had, uh, we had Jackie Ma come in and she spent some time with our faculty with regards to identifying some specific literacy strategies that they could take and use back in their classrooms right away, and she also did an inventory with them to help identify the, the, the various strategies that they recognize, know about, and are able to actually teach, and it provides us with some information that was unfortunately, you know, eye-opening with regards to the fact that our staff doesn't really have a lot of strategies with regards to how to teach reading strategies within the context of the classroom, and that's not really a surprise when you stop and think about it, because at the secondary level, you receive at most one class in reading in the content area, and that's the extent of it, and so we have a tendency, I think, at times to think that, well, we're teaching science or we're teaching math, that we don't have an obligation to teach literacy, that's somebody else's job, that's the language arts teacher's job.
Sure.
And so it became pretty clear, I think, to our faculty that, you know, okay, I understand and I, I agree with the fact that I need to be able to help students with their literacy skills, but I'm not sure how to do that, so please help me, and so we've taken that, that information, and Jack and Michelle Bradley are working together to try to formulate a plan to help our staff get the skills that they need to be successful, and it's not a, it doesn't have to be an all-inclusive situation, but it can be one or two or three strategies that they can use immediately in the classroom to help their, to help our students.
And, and I'm not just keying in on tests, but obviously, when we look at the ACT and those tests, it really looks like a reading test in a lot of ways, and, and, I mean, but those are the skills you really need, you need to be able to read a manual and so forth, so, uh, those are the things that we're working on, is that they're working towards those.
And, and if I could, you know, the thing that, that has been kind of brought up here time and time, you know, again tonight, has been, you know, there's this, all this emphasis on, on literacy and math, and, and that's exactly the case-
Yes.
-but it's not just about closing the gap for those who are not quite at benchmark, and we've seen that we're getting some alligators going here at elementary and middle school level, this ending needs to happen at the high school level, we need to have the alligators there as well, so that our students who are in a deficiency have the skills to be successful, because if you enter high school with a reading deficiency or a math deficiency, the chances that you will be successful in other classes really becomes minimal.
Sure.
It becomes very difficult for a student who can't read successfully to be successful in not only in English, but in history and in science and in math, I mean, it, it just goes on and on and on, so it's really critical that that gap gets closed prior to their arrival, and if it hasn't happened, all right, in the case right now where we're working to try to catch up, you know, K-12, we gotta make sure that we do a weekend to close that gap now as well.
Phil, can I ask a general PLC question regarding the time?
Sure.
This might be a little too broad, but, um, we've launched so many initiatives, we've had so many beginning conversations, and we've pubbed so much data into these discussion days, um, and then when I read the, the raw feedback, uh, from our teaching professionals, they want to spend more time amongst themselves, it seems like, uh, whether that be linear, you know, going high school and middle school, or middle school, elementary, to make sure that their peers are, are pacing the students correctly when they hit the middle school type thing, or whether it be across their subject area, um, do you see that as something that becomes a natural progression, that we, that we, granted, we, we need to spend a lot of time, uh, explaining the initiatives, launching them, communicating, we have to spend, I mean, you can't spend enough time communicating, but it, you know, is there a, I don't want to call it a phase two, but is there a, an area where we start getting into allowing it to be completely teacher-driven, is that, is that kind of a progression?
It's called number D on the agenda, which we're gonna address through the professional development plan.
Did I, was I moving the agenda along?
Sure.
It's a twofer.
Just in case anyone isn't talking fast enough.
Yeah, right, okay.
But you know, I think it's, it's a good question, and also, it emphasizes something that, that Crystal mentioned earlier, and that was the fact that we, we have been pushing students hard, okay, we've also been pushing our staff hard, there's no question about that, and they, they've been pretty resilient with regards to that, there's been a lot of information that's been front-loaded to them this year with regards to ways we're trying to help catch our, our students up, okay, and that will eventually kind of fetter itself out into, to a, you know, I don't want to call it a commerce situation, so to speak, but something that is gonna be a little bit more easy to digest, where it won't be so much information coming at once, but, but we feel it's, it's incredibly important right now to identify and address the areas where we see deficiencies and take care of that. We can talk about slowing the train down and everything else, and let's have time to digest it and so forth, but in the meantime, we have students running schools now-
Yeah.
-who are not gonna be getting the, the maximum value of the education that they deserve if we decide to slow the bus or train down, we need to keep that train going until we get caught up, and then we'll have the systems in place where we won't need to be going a hundred miles an hour all the time.
You'll see from the professional development plan that I think Lori's going to start with right now, is that it's going to be a continuation of the initiatives that we've, we've started this year, and it's, it's very closely aligned with what our strategic plan is. Jump in, Lori.
Okay, which, which was half of what I was going to say, Crystal already stole. Um, we've had a strategic planning group meeting over the course again of our PLC afternoons and also after school, and we've identified seven initiatives that we're going to continue with in terms of professional development over the next three years, and you received these documents, uh, prior in the week, and those seven initiatives are assessment literacy and data-driven decision-making, literacy, math, differentiation, inclusive practices, grading and assessment, PBIS, and Twenty-First Century Learning Instructional Technology. We recognize that this year has been a lot of year, or a lot, sorry, a lot of the year has been dedicated to giving all the information, and our teachers do need time to apply, and we've been intentional in trying to give that time, but it's not enough with the amount of initiatives that we're doing right now, so that's why we want to focus over the next three years on these seven initiatives, and these initiatives, we feel, have the biggest impact on student gains, so they're, they're intentionally selected because they think they're, we think they're worth the time. Um, in terms of what we shared with you, we have mapped out what next school year could look like, based very specifically on the dates of Wednesdays and having an early release or having two hours of time on Wednesdays, and you will see that those seven initiatives are brought back over and over again throughout the course, and so in order to give teachers time to work, we look at a month's structure and we decided that the first and third Wednesdays should be sacred time for teachers to collaborate, whether that's in grade level teams or by content area team to work on, because they'll have their essential learning targets drafted, so now working on common assessments and four-point rubrics to help with our standards-based grading, and also using data to plan groups for differentiation, structural interventions and enrichment. So, again, first and third Wednesdays is what we would like to use for just those activities. On the second Wednesdays of each month, we'd like that time to be dedicated to professional development and action teams at the building level, so in the direction of the building leaders, and the fourth Wednesdays being a combination of district-wide committees and having, we, we, we've really launched a buffet, is, is kind of the term we've been using this year, of options for teachers to choose from for professional development, we'd like to continue that structure moving into next school year, and that's an opportunity for when staff go to conferences or workshops to come back and share with the rest of their, their peers, or, uh, it's a venue for our literacy coaches, our math coaches, our PBIS coaches to share strategies, and so that's worked out really well this year, Matt and his staff have also offered a lot of instructional technology applications for our staff during those times, so we'd like to continue that, and that was as quick as I could give that, but I'll be happy to answer questions, um, in terms of that, but you do have the documents and you'll see that those seven initiatives run over the next three years.
Um, any questions I might have, I might save for the calendar-
Okay.
-because there are some questions I have within a building-wise basis. Um, I, I, I think it looks like a good plan, I mean, we, we definitely have a direction and, and it's not like, what are we doing this Wednesday type plan, but we are, we have a specific plan, so it's great.
Right, the idea is to be systematic and ongoing with our plan.
Thank you. Brings us to the portion of the agenda for consent, to which I will turn to the Chair of Finance.
The Finance Committee met, I move to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion, Mr. McNeven, seconded by Cummings, any discussion?
I, I would like to say I've already, um, um, shared my displeasure, I think, with Sean, um, I'm not really liking the new, um, um, financial report, because it doesn't say what the money's being spent for, for example, if you have a bill, let's say for three hundred dollars, let's say for Hill Electric, we don't know what they did with that three hundred dollars.
Well, and, I'm, we're hoping to be able to fix that, so that, um, you should be able to drill down and see a lot of that information, correct? Eventually, when we get settled in here with this, the, the great thing about the software conversion is it ties everybody in on the same data, it gets everybody in on the same access points, and so if you have a question regarding Hill Electric, you'll be able to pull that invoice up, you'll be able to see accompanying purchase orders, who signed off on it, what the work was, and, and if we wanted to put in the effort, you know, the scan, copy the bill and things like that, I don't know if we're really gonna go that far, but, um, a lot of that supporting information is and should and can be accessible, we just haven't, we haven't settled in quite yet on getting to that level of detail on payables.
Well, we have the capability of doing that.
Not yet, well, it, the system-
In the future.
The system can, it just hasn't been our priority.
No, but then, and again, once we get further down the road, we'll be able to do that, so.
If I have any questions, I'll just tap password on open record.
Yep. Or just ask Jim, email Jim, and we can get them for you, too.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Having a motion and a second. Those in favor of the approval of the January receipts and dispersed ones is presented, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to personnel recommendations. I'm not aware of any approval of resignations. I'm not aware of any approval of posting for new hires as of tonight.
Impossible.
And there is a couple of postings not on your agendas for rationale behind the two, both at the high school. Crystal?
Well, this was previous resignations and retirements that the board had acted on at the last meeting. Mr. Los wanted time to review the enrollment information to see where we were at with that. So, we are asking for approval to post a full-time high school business position. That was Mike Carpenter. And a .5 FTE high school family consumer ed, which was Florence Lubow.
Entertained a motion to that effect. So.
Second.
Motion by Viedro, and seconded by Mr. Mearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the approval of those two postings, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Posting carries. Brings us to the approval of the long-term substitute positions. There's two that are listed. There's a third that was added. For the third, which is not on your agenda to be added, is Catherine James. And for the background, Crystal?
We had a teacher who had an overload on her contract. She has asked to be released from that overload, and the teachers' union has agreed to that change. We will be adjusting her contract. In that place, we will hire a long-term sub for that one hour of overload. And it's my understanding from Mr. Harris that we, we do have somebody interested, qualified, and willing to do that one hour per day.
The position is?
It's music.
Music, okay. Entertained a motion for the approval of those three long-term substitute positions.
I'll move to approve.
For a second?
Sure.
Having a motion by Mr. Mearing and a second by Mr. McNeven. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to new business. Provided to you in your board packet was some information in regards to a donation of books. And we'd like to take a moment to recognize that donation and formal acceptance, and make sure that all the parties that are involved receive the appropriate accolades.
We're very fortunate, because we have a Baraboo resident who works at the CCBC in Madison, and they are required to review award-winning books every year. And she has thought of Baraboo School District and has donated 227 books that are in brand-new condition, which our K-12 reading specialist, Kelly Steiner, has, has already previewed.
So, I would entertain a motion for the formal acceptance of that. So do you?
I'll second that. This isn't hard.
Motion by Viedro, seconded by Mearing. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. And she was sent a thank you from Kelly Steiner.
Yep.
Brings us to the portion of the agenda for an open enrollment compliance update from Ms. Scott.
I'll attempt to make this as brief as possible.
Good.
I'm not kidding.
I want to hear about every number on this.
With Act 114, there have been many, many changes that have gone into effect with our open enrollment, the most significant of which is now our open enrollment period is from three weeks to essentially a three-month window that closes on April 30. But one of the provisions within this new act requires that the school board establish the number of open enrollment spaces for the upcoming school year. And the law requires that that be actually be done in January, but because the law didn't go into effect until mid-February, they said for this first year that the board needs to do that as soon as possible. So, what I passed out is what we are projecting for total number of open enrollment spaces for the 2012-13 school year. So, what we did is we utilized a method that looked at projected class size, and we multiplied that by the number of sections to determine what our capacity will be. One thing I want you to note is that our current enrollment, we include students that are currently open-enrolled within our enrollment count. Okay? So, students that are already attending the Baraboo School District under an open enrollment, those are already included in our projected enrollment numbers. Okay? At the high school, it gets a little more complicated, because we don't necessarily have courses that are grade-level specific, particularly as you get into 11th and 12th grade. So, what we, what we looked at there, Phil and I sat down, and we utilized the projected numbers based on student registration that we had just recently completed. And we used that to figure out what our capacity, what our projected numbers were, and as well as our capacity. So, obviously, our goal for, for the district is to be able to accept in as many students as we possibly can while maintaining, you know, working within our staffing and our, our space issues, as well as maintaining an optimal learning environment. So, we don't want to have to be in, in a situation where we necessarily have to turn anybody away. These numbers will be utilized to establish open enrollment spaces only. These numbers don't correlate in terms of a board policy for establishing class size. Okay? So, I want to make that distinction clear. This is just, these numbers will just determine the number of open enrollment spaces. And again, these are projections. You know, it's kind of hard to project what our numbers will be for September. Now, January, a lot of different things could happen between now and then. So, this is right now our best guess in terms of what our projected enrollment will be for next year. So, if you look at the sheet that I just handed out for the elementary level, it shows you the number of spaces that we are projecting that we will have available. You can see, for example, at the fifth-grade level, we are projecting that we could take in up to 35 open enrollment students. Okay? And again, this varies depending on what our current numbers show. At the first-grade level, you can see right now, given our current numbers, it would be very hard for us to take in any first-grade open enrollment students. And then, starting at the sixth grade, we have to do projected number of spaces for each core academic area, so language arts, math, science, and social studies. And then what we're required to do is whatever that lowest number is within those four core academic areas, that's the number that we are required to use by law. So, you see there for sixth grade, we're projecting that we've been able to take in 38 students. We are very tight at the seventh and eighth grade levels. So, we are projecting at this point that we would not be able to take in very many students at that, those two grade levels. And then for grade nine, our lowest number is 25. So, that's what we would set our, the number at for ninth grade. For 10th grade, it would be at 16. 11th grade, we could take in up to 35. And at 12th grade, we could take up to 25. Okay? Any questions?
Is, is there an assumption, when you, using seventh grade as an example, where you say that we have two spaces available? I'm gonna guess that we have currently more than two kids that open enroll into seventh grade. Is there an assumption that they are coming back?
Yes, they are included in the current, under projected enrollment. So, this would be new spaces available.
All right.
Yes. No, we are planning on continuing all open enrollment students coming back.
And Danny and I talked about the tight numbers at the middle school, but we felt it was important to leave a couple spaces open, because if we have a family who's requesting open enrollment to Baraboo, and they have students in various grade levels, and one of them falls in seventh or eighth grade, we don't want to have that family turned away because we don't have a spot for them. And, you know, this is all rather silly anyway, I think, because every year now in January, we have to predict the number of open enrollment spaces we have. And because of the open enrollment law changes, you know, literally, it, it's, it's just so much harder to predict than it has been in, in past years.
Well, we're not predicting how many are going out, which impacts this dramatically.
It certainly does. Right.
And again, this, and, and the window is extended till May, which is wrecking havoc on our planning processes, too. One question that, that is, again, just interesting. Okay, I have a sixth grade with 250 capacity, seventh, 270, then all of a sudden we go to 208. Why the lower number in eighth grade?
Number of sections.
Sections.
We're basing off the eight. If you look, there's eight sections only, where the other two have 10.
So, we have an extremely low population in our seventh grade right now?
Yes. We have eight sections right now in seventh grade. Yeah.
Yeah.
Roller coaster ride.
Okay.
So far, we're adjusting.
Welcome to the party.
Ah, you and your kindergarten. All your complaints about your kindergarten.
Doug would like to be on the committee next year.
Sorry, I love it. I love numbers.
And this doesn't even get into requests for specific schools. These are requests for specific grade levels.
Oh, yeah.
What's next?
That's part of Molly's fun.
So, the requirement is, is that the board approve your guesstimations here?
It's a new requirement.
We have to, we have to approve.
Can we approve?
Even if we don't have it here.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it with a smile on my face.
Who was the motion?
I did. And I seconded it.
Mr. McNeven with the motion, Mr. Mearing with the second. Any further discussion?
Yep.
Hearing none. Those in favor of accepting the open enrollment spaces as provided, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Second half coming up here.
Are you motioning on this one, too?
I saved my editorial comments.
Do you have something else to act upon?
Yes.
I would ask, when we're done with this, that you collect the sheet back with personal information on it.
Absolutely.
Oh.
Under the Act, did I answer? Did I answer?
Yeah, who voted?
Okay, sorry. Under the new Act, one of the new provisions is that if a student meets one of seven exceptions, they can apply for open enrollment outside of that normal enrollment period. So, we actually have had our first request for exemption. So, you have before you the student's application. And actually, the student is already open-enrolled out of the Baraboo School District and is attending the Wisconsin Virtual Learning Charter School, which is part of the Ozaki School District. And because of financial circumstances with this particular family, both parents now are in a situation where they have to return to work, so they are not able to continue to support their child within this virtual learning environment. And so, they are requesting that the student be granted open enrollment to the SOAC School District, and the student will be attending the Mira Mack Charter School.
This is for the balance of this current semester?
Yep. So, activated immediately. And then they're also applying for open enrollment to that same, to the SOAC School District for the 2012-13 school year.
But they are not currently in our school building?
Correct. They are currently open enrolled out.
Okay. Motion, motion to accept.
I will make a motion to accept this.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Viedro.
It says the student is applying for transportation reimbursement. Who are they applying to transportation?
And state reimbursement.
Okay.
There's a specific amount of money available for parents to apply for. It's not a district.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else you got for us?
That's it.
Sure. Okay. Up next on the agenda is the Jack Young Middle School Building Wall Project Presentation. Mr. Samansky from MSA.
Patiently waiting.
Don't worry, he's charging us for it.
Worth every penny.
And that's all.
So, it's eight o'clock. BG and T and I have been working on this for hours. So, I guess you guys will have to give me the sign to cut it off or something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Already?
Be careful what you ask for.
So, I'm assuming everybody has a copy of the report that I assembled? Have, have a chance to look at that?
I, I think there's an extra one somewhere.
I didn't bring extra copies.
I sent it in here. Yeah, I'm afraid to open it.
Sorry. So, basically, what we did is we spent a lot of time studying the middle school and the conditions. And obviously, this is not the first time that this has come up. You know, if you recall, back in, I think it was 2005, we had the issue at the gym, different walls around, you know, the exterior walls of the gym at the middle school. And we went through the process of taking down and reinforcing those walls. The consistent conditions that occurred at that time, this is just an extension of that. The work that we did last summer, we were tearing the walls down at the commons area. This is the same thing again. It's just spreading around more of the building. And what brought this to our attention, actually, was district staff and teachers, you know, seeing water was leaking inside of the building. And water is coming in through the heads of the windows, actually steel lintel above the windows, actually through the windows themselves. And water was dripping in, and Ron Hins was the one that went out and started taking a look at this and, you know, brought this to the attention of Patrick Acker, and then Jim Wong, and got myself involved. So, what we did is on, it was November 30th, we had rural masons come out, and we cut seven observation holes into the outside of the building. And this was the day we had two masons there. So, we picked selective areas around the building, and this is all on the south wing of the building. And I was random in where I picked locations for the holes, but I wanted it kind of selective of different areas to take a look at. The holes were small. They weren't very big, but we were able to see into the wall in different areas. I also spent portions of three afternoons walking the entire interior of that building in that south wing, and looking at, you know, what the inside of the building looked like. So, you know, a fair amount of time went into this. Looking at the outside of the building, you know, it was somewhat suspect, you know, what was going on. It's hard to see in the picture, but you can kind of see the waviness, you know, the ups and downs in the brick. And you can pick it up a little bit in these pictures. But what we found is, just like what was at the commons area this last summer, when we tore that apart, and the same thing and the corrections that were made there, there's a steel beam. And this is a picture. This is the window right here. And then right above the window is a steel plate. And then there's a beam above that. This is a piece of rubber flashing that's in the wall. And that steel beam is an eight-inch tall beam, with a steel plate on the bottom of it that's welded to it. And what's going on with what you see here, this is rust that has accumulated in that wall. And this is the bottom of the beam. It's normally a nice and straight piece of steel. And you can see how it's kind of going up and down with a lot of rust that's occurring in it. So, just like at the commons area, that steel plate, there's welds that hold that plate to that steel beam. And the welds are gone on the outside edge. They don't exist. So, the only thing that's holding that plate up is there's welds on the other side of that beam, on the inside edge of it. And this is pretty alarming. When we opened up the wall and I saw this, this is rust. And obviously, you know, when steel rusts, it expands. So, that's why you see the volume of what you see there. The ruler kind of helps give you a little bit of idea of the scale of it. That's the steel plate, and that beam is what holds the brick up on the building.
This is just a random spot you picked. You didn't just say, okay, this looks bad. There's a bubble in there. You just said, I'm, go here, and bam, it was.
Yeah. I kind of documented what window this is from. I don't recall right offhand, but there was a, see? I don't recall right offhand, but there was a, see, around the south wing, what I call the west side, which would be facing the Circle Drive.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's at the upper floor. You can see it from the outside, and it was actually one of the windows that Ron Hints had found, and it looked really alarming to him. I can't remember if this picture was taken from there, but there were a couple of them that looked like this.
Okay.
Where we did openings. This is another one, again, just kind of zooming in. This is the steel plate looking down on top of it, and this is the bottom flange of the steel beam. And you can see the amount of, you know, corrosion, rotting, and pitting that's going on. I don't know how well you can see it from way back there, but once again, this is the plate, the bottom of the beam. And at one time when this was built, that steel beam was tight to that steel plate, and it was welded to it. Right now, at this particular location, there's a half of an inch of gap there. This was at another opening. Here, there's rust, you can see the surface rust on the plate, and here's the bottom of the steel beam coming down. Over here, you can see there's weld, it's about a inch and a half to two inches of weld that occurs every twelve to sixteen inches. At this particular location, even though there's rust there, the steel weld is still intact. So there are some locations that are not as bad as the previous pictures. This is a picture of another opening. Here's the bottom of the steel plate. Here's the bottom of the steel beam, it's quite rusted, you can see the big expanded flakes of rust. I don't know how well you guys see that back there in detail. This is caulk that was added by the district to close that space off, probably about five years ago, to try to stop water from penetrating in. And there were plastic tubes that were put in to weep any water out. When that building was originally built, the brick that was laid up on the building was actually set on that piece of steel. And right now, that steel has dropped down away from the brick, so there's nothing supporting the brick. It's, it's basically hanging there right now. It is tied back to the backup block a little bit, but some of what's holding it there is just its own ability to span across that distance. Here's another picture, just close up, the steel plate, the bottom of the brick, and there's five eighths of an inch of gap. This is caulk, but there's five eighths of an inch of gap between that brick and the plate. And I went through, Ron Hints and I went around the entire outside perimeter of the building, every window, for the length of every window, and we documented and measured what that gap was between the steel plate and the beam. And out of twenty of the windows on the outside of that building, you know, the long, narrow, thin windows, fourteen of them had gaps between the brick and that steel plate that were way beyond what they should be. So basically, seventy percent of the windows in that south wing, basically structurally, have most support for the brick that's on that building.
Al, I know you've gone through a lot of this in the BG and D committee and spent a lot of time on it. I, one of the questions that I get asked a lot is, is there a safety concern today? Right now, with the way that brick stands on that building, how safe are the kids? Walking by that, being outside or on there, is there any danger of that brick coming apart?
There's always a risk. And that's why there's orange snow fence around the building right now, because we were concerned about that potential, and it may be slight, it may not be, but we did the same thing last summer when we found the condition at the commons area. We fenced that area off, nothing ever happened, maybe nothing will happen here either. But the worst areas, which would be the east and the west sides, so facing Draper Street where the loading dock is, and facing the Circle Drive, that has been fenced off right now.
When did that, because it's not all fenced off, correct?
Yeah, it is.
It is now?
For the entire length of those walls, yeah.
Okay.
You might want to mention too, Al, that this is a brick facade on the outside, this is not the brick to the block structure in the interior.
Yeah, that is correct. The bits of brick on the outside is the primary concern. This is one of the things that pass around. This piece of steel was taken from the wall. This is the wire tie that's in the wall that ties the brick to the backup wall. And these little pieces here normally, you know, was a piece of steel that continued all the way across, and it's gone, I'll get into that next. This is what, what diameter it used to be, the size that it used to be, and you can see how much of it is gone, if you just want to pass that around. So the steel plate is just one of the issues. You know, here, this picture I gave was from Ron Hints took this one. And this really tells it all. You can see the steel plate, and you can see the mortar. At one time, it was sitting on that steel plate, that's an air gap. And that, that's actually pretty common, it's most of the upper floor of the windows, it's not quite that. Full toughness is higher, but if you put a level on the bottom of that plate, and what's happening is that plate is tipping or dropping down, as you can see by the bubble on the level is off-center. The steel beam that spans across those windows, which are about thirty feet long, is hung from the structure above. It doesn't actually span that entire thirty feet on its own. And there's a picture that shows, because the piece of steel is an angle, it comes down to this plate on the bottom and that beam, and it holds it. And those suspension angles are at every eight feet for the length of that beam. This was just one particular location where we opened it up, and this one happened to be in good shape. That piece of wire that I passed around, there's a wire that runs in the brick itself. This was at one of the holes that we opened up. And then the wires span back, and it's supposed to connect to the backup wall back here, which is a concrete block wall, which is on the inside of the building. You can see in this picture, it's, it's gone. It's totally rusted through. It's meant to hold that wall together. This condition was worse on the far south end of the building. It was not quite as common on the east and the west sides. Another picture of the same wall, you can see the wire in here again, it's totally rusted away.
Al, you might want to mention too, that there's a block on the inside, the brick on the outside, and there's what, one inch insulation and one inch of dead airspace?
Yeah, I think the foam is two inches thick.
Okay.
They have rigid insulation. And that's what you see right here, it's two inches of poly, expanded polystyrene insulation. But then there's an airspace in front of that insulation to where the brick is. And it's in that airspace is where all of that rusting has occurred. And it's because of moisture that's gotten back into the, into the wall through the brick. Not all the ties are rusted. You know, here's a case right here where the wire spans across that airspace. It's rusted, but it's not totally gone. We had a problem, you know, back on the gym wall, back in 2005, where the mortar joint itself was actually being pushed out of the wall. And a lot of that was coming from a piece of wire that runs horizontally through that joint. And as that steel expands, it pushes that mortar out. And you can also see the, maybe not so well from there, but there's a disconnect between the mortar and the brick, and that's where I think that a lot of the water is getting into the wall. And then there's cracks, you can kind of see the hairline cracks in the brick. Water gets in, penetrates the wall at those locations. There's a lot of cracking in the building, inside and out. When you walk around the building and you climb up on a ladder, you can see it. And here, it's really evident in this picture, you can see the cracking that's occurring. A lot of that is happening because there's no support for the brick anymore, only the windows. And then here, you can see that gap between the steel plate and the mortar under the brick. Kind of hard to see here, but here's a stepped crack that's right over the brick. The brick there is starting to drop down, because the plate's not there as supported anymore. Now, the one, the same thing, it comes right up off the corner of the window, and it steps up because the brick is starting to drop. This is a shot, the inside of the building. This is the top of the window, here's the inside of the steel plate. It's all rusted because of the water that's coming through. And then on the inside of the building, the concrete block wall has a lot of cracking that's going on. And if you can just walk throughout, you'll see it throughout, it's pretty evident. And here's why, I just happened to pick up a plastic ruler that was laying on the countertop of the cabinets, and I, I stuck it into the wall. And that's how big that crack is, that I could actually physically get that thick plastic ruler into that wall. You know, there's a crack in the wall, it's a sixteenth of an inch. So there's cracking throughout. And here's another one, look at all the way around each one of those blocks, how much of that is cracked. It just graphically did little present, you know, representation. The windows that are colored in red are the windows that are worst. There was, there's two walk doors in here with some minor conditions going on. There's two hollow metal windows in the stairwell, where the condition is somewhat minor. There's three HVAC, three HVAC hoovers on the building where the condition was minor. But the biggest problem is at the aluminum windows. So like I said before, there's twenty aluminum windows, fourteen of them are really bad. There's four of them that are minor, and two of them look like they're okay. So it's about seventy to seventy-five percent of the windows on the building that have this problem. And the condition goes beyond this. There's some other structural issues that we found that were issues. I mentioned before about the fact that the steel beams that span across the top of the windows are hanging. So if you can kind of envision that, that if my arm here is the floor or the roof, there's these hanging rods or those angles that come down that support this beam that runs horizontally. When the wind blows on the wall, those, that beam is just, it's doing this. There's nothing to keep it rigid. And so I think that in part is why a lot of that cracking is being seen on the inside of the building, is because there's so much flex going on there. Another issue is that, just like what we saw and dealt with on the gym, is that the concrete block wall, which is really the structural portion of the wall, is only six inches wide. At the gym, it was a real big deal, because it was standing twenty-seven foot tall without any reinforcing in it. At least here, the floor, the underside of structure height is about ten foot nine. And at MSA, our practice is, is that that backup wall is the structural portion of the wall, and the brick veneer on the outside is a veneer, and we don't consider that as structural. It's what we consider a rain screen, and we don't consider the two combined. I know there's some differing thoughts on that particular practice, but I feel that the walls basically are inadequate in, in, in structural integrity. They're not longer walls when wind is applied to them for the code required requirements for the amount of force that has to be applied to that wall in the structural design. The walls, because they're unreinforced, and they're only six inches, and they're standing ten foot nine tall, especially with all of the wire ties being rusted away, that the wall has some structural problems. So, what else? There's bracing problems, there's, for example, the wall, the first floor of the wall sits on the foundation, it goes up to the concrete floor system. When it comes up to that concrete floor system, there's no connection there to hold that wall in place from lateral movement with the wind pushing on it. Same thing for the floor on the floor, so the second floor going up to the roof. The wall sits on a concrete floor system, and it goes up to the roof. And at the roof, there's a big steel I-beam, it's about eighteen inches tall. You pop the ceiling tile, and you can look up, and there's a gap of about five eighths of an inch from the top of the block wall to that beam. So there physically is no connection holding that block in that position. And then the steel beam as well, even if it were connected, there's nothing there to actually brace that up into the roof structure. So there's a lot of problems, it's a complicated issue. It's not, not a simple, you know, issue to come up with a solution. There's obviously many different options for how to solve it. But our recommendation, and our way of, our, our solution, our recommendation, the REFEED is the best way to accomplish correctness and for the long term and longevity of the building, is to completely remove that wall in its entirety, brick and block, like we did on the commons area this last summer, and rebuild it with brand-new construction from top to bottom. And then we'd be putting concrete block in there that is structurally engineered, with reinforcement in it, connecting it at the top and the bottom, making changes to the way that steel stands across the window openings. We would add columns in there to actually physically take the wind loads that are applied to it. Steel, as we did last summer, has a special coating on it to help prevent rust from occurring in the future. We would change the design of it so that it's adequately braced for all the wind loads that are applied to it, and basically rebuild it from top to bottom. Now, it's not a cheap endeavor. You know, we, this is a study phase only at this point in time, but with what numbers we put together on it, it's about a $1.65 million project. And this basically takes care of, would take care of, most of the balance of the perimeter of the building, but there are still some areas that would be left to remain. It would not be accomplished in this portion of the project. Between the third level and the fourth level, there's a step up in there, and it's up on the roof as well as down on the floor. There's a brick up there, it's about six to eight foot tall. That portion still would remain from the original building. And then on the backside of the building, back to the small playground, was that on the west side of the building? There is still a portion of the wall back there that would still be original construction that would not be accomplished as part of this project. So potentially, there, potentially, there still could be more to come in the future, but it's a minor portion of the building compared to what's been, or, you know, what would be taken care of at this point. The district did have a second opinion, looking at this condition on the wall. And most of the areas, you know, coincide with what MSA and I had to say about this condition with, you know, removing the brick from the building. The other opinion suggested not taking the block down, the backup, the concrete block wall, the six-inch wall. We reviewed that in our office, tossed out a lot of different ideas. There's a lot of different possibilities, but my concerns are, with all the rusting steel in the wall, and how do you clean the rust off of, you know, the areas that we saw with the amount of rust that's there? The picture is. You know, without, without taking that all apart, how do you get into the crevices and the cracks to get that rust out of there, probably coat that so it doesn't rust again? I don't know if any of you have had experience with steel rust on a steel pole at home, like a basketball hoop or something like that. You sand that down, you put primer on it, you paint it again, and in a certain number of years, rust comes back again. So, you know, it's a decision from a longevity standpoint. You know, how long are you going to be in the building? How long do you want the solution to last? There's always cheaper ways to do things, but those, you know, are decisions that you'd have to make. But as we've done things over the last, yeah, John?
Al, was, you're saying the other, the, the second opinion recommended leaving, including the steel?
Yes.
Because hasn't the integrity of all those beams been compromised? I mean, it, when you're looking at rusting away eighth inch, quarter inch of beam, when you're looking at it going underneath, I mean, it's, if it, if it's at the seam, it's got to be underneath it too, right? Heating away at the flange?
And our recommendation was basically to clean the rust off, inject the. Yeah, our recommendation was basically to clean the rust off, jack the plate back up again, weld it. And in a, in a condition like this, I don't know how you would weld that because that steel's not so compromised with rust. Jacking the plate back up would be really difficult because you'd have to be able to clean all this rust off because it goes back in underneath that beam. You know, trying to clean all that out of there, remove the rust and then also coat it with something would be... I haven't figured out how a contractor would physically do that without taking it down.
It's at least six inches in there, is it? How deep is it in there?
Well, the plate is twelve inches wide total.
Yeah.
But there's a six inch block on the inside base that sits on that plate. If you took the brick off on the outside, it would expose just like we did here. It would expose roughly a third of the plate from here to here. And the steel beam would still need to be there. And we, we've tossed it around a lot, considered different ideas. You know, you, you can always try to do that, but you can engineer a project and bid it out that way unless a contractor rips it open.
I really don't think that's an option, Al.
What's that?
Cleaning that up, to me, is not even an option.
I, I personally don't think so. I'm going to run into more headaches and change orders down the road than what it's for.
Then you have no guarantee, I would think.
Well, there's never any guarantee.
Well, I know.
That's a lot harder condition.
Yeah.
And then the thing you're going to run into is, right now, there's a lead time on all these materials. We had a two month window of time in the summer to try to get some of this work done. And here, we're already, yes, the first of March. So, it, it's going to be a crash project just to try to get something, if we decide to go ahead, to try to get something ready to get construction done this summer. Um, I can't remember all the specific details, but we have lead times on the brick. Uh, there's lead times on all the structural steel, there's lead times on the wire reinforcing that has to go into the wall. So, if, if you tried to do a project where you tried to save some of this material and you got a contractor out here in the middle of June, they start tearing this building apart? You know, how long is it going to take to get steel fabricated when you got the building opened up?
Well, some guys are really good at that, just so you know, just saying.
You know, so, those are some of the challenges.
Can you spend a couple of minutes going over the, the logistics of how this huge scale project will be accomplished? You know, because we're not going to obviously get it all done over one summer, but what, what the logistics are of that and what the priorities are to the start to the finish of the project? Your recommendations, anyway?
Yes. There's basically almost sixteen thousand square feet of wall area around this portion of the project we're talking about. It's too much area for a contractor to do in one summer because there's only two months for a period of time to get this accomplished. That's a pretty short period of time. Once school would get out, the rooms would have to be emptied out of their contents, at least away from the outside wall. Pretty much every single wall has casework, countertops and cabinets up against it that would have to be removed. There's electrical outlets along the wall with wiring, braceways. Uh, science room, uh, gas piping, the gas cocks in the science rooms that would have to be taken down. Part of the ceiling tile has to be taken down and pulled back. Temporary wall would have to be built inside of the building. So you have to go through all that work just to get to the point of tearing the wall down and taking the steel out. New structural steel is going to take probably in the neighborhood of three to five weeks to get fabricated from the time of having to get shop drawings approved, getting the steel fabricated and having the coatings put on it before it's delivered to the site. The brick, if I remember correctly, had, was it ten weeks? Yeah, a lead time. That the district would have to direct purchase and release an order on ahead of time. I'd have to work with the brick supplier to determine the quantity, the quantity of brick that would be required so that that could be purchased. Because as of right now, none of that brick exists. So the clay would have to be mined and the brick, the brick would have to be molded and fired and then trucked here. So the amount of time that that takes. And then all the horizontal reinforcement steel that goes into the wall, that has, I heard a couple of weeks ago, the lead time was three to five weeks, today it changed to four to six. So as we get closer to summer, those lead times are expanding because everybody's trying to get their projects started and spreading. And then, of course, you got to get a construction crew on site, you know, start tearing the building apart and getting, getting it reconstructed basically by the third week in August. Let alone all the design preparation time that has to be done yet because like I said, you know, this is still in the study phase. You know, as we would sit down and, and start working on the design of this, working out all the details and the devil's in the detail, right? So, there's a lot to get done. And then the contractor, you know, within that two month period of time, it's basically our Vogel Brothers and the Northern Masonry did the project this last summer on, on the commons area. I had them take a look at it and they concurred with me that this is a two summer project, that they can't get it all done. Um, I started to think about if there's any possible way to expand that two months of construction time. And that would certainly help. I know it would be an incredible disruption to teachers in the building. But we have to build a temporary wall, like, you know, roughly six feet inside of the classroom to protect the inside of the building from weather and bugs. You know, it's, it's possible to construct that wall that has some, not only weather resistant capabilities, but sound resistant capabilities to a degree. You know, teachers would have to live with that disruption, but it would certainly help with trying to get this project accomplished because that two months is an extremely tight timeframe. So, there's, there's a lot of complexity to this and a lot of things I think about and to work out yet at this point. Now, is that addressed, Kevin?
Yes, thank you.
Did you decide, Al, to replace a six inch block eight inch? You made that decision, yeah?
No, it could go either way. By reinforcing it and, and engineering it to meet the code requirements, it would work either way. And then connect, properly connecting it at the top and the bottom to the foundation, the floor and the roof.
And you say there aren't any vertical rods on the existing wall? So that would change too, correct?
What's that?
That would change too, right? You would put verticals?
That would be reinforced, connected, tied into the existing structure. And by adding, uh, columns within the windows are now, so the appearance would change slightly. That would get rid of that issue that I talked about, the steel doing this. That would all be engineered and structurally sound when they're done.
Alan, your estimate, estimate here, one point six five, that includes new windows and carpeting also?
Right, there's all new windows and all new carpeting. And all the rooms that are adjacent to this wall. And the carpeting is something that had to be done anyways.
Kevin, was there a recommendation on a BGT what to do?
The recommendation from the previous BGT meeting was to have this presentation to the full board and proceed.
And a second opinion too, wouldn't it?
And we did this, the, the second opinion, which has come full force with what Al's presenting today.
So what kind of recommendation do you need out of the board to make, or are you looking for?
Well, I, the ability for Al to move forward with the phases that he's laid out, which looks like the first is tomorrow, or today, actually, for the, to, to start the preparation of the plans and the specs so that you can go out and get bids. We're not okaying dollars on a, on a contract because we don't have
Right.
a contract. But I, I would like to, and probably Jim would have to help do this, I think it's important to spell out that this is actually over the course of three fiscal years, we're talking about two summers, but it's three fiscal years.
Right, right. So tonight, we have to authorize the design and, and the design and bid of the project, correct?
Correct.
And order some of the product too, Billy? We have to order a product.
The brick? Your, your guesstimate on the, what, what the plan was, was to order all of the brick even though we would use them over the course of two summers? And we'll secure a district property somewhere to store them outside. Um, but your guesstimation as the cost of the brick, I think, was about eighty grand?
Right.
Something like that, so it's not, it's, the, the brick is not a huge, I mean, that could certainly be part of the motion.
Right, steel, yeah, it, it thinks it needs a lead time on.
The horizontal joint reinforcement, I'd like to get an order placed on that as well. And I even gave, gave some thought to how all the structural steel could be viewed as a separate package in order to get that here in time and to allow a little more time with the preparation of the rest of the plans and the bidding for that work as well. So there, there's some things, there are possibilities to be worked out.
Al, I'm, I'm kind of the new kid on the block. Uh, but what I've heard is, even after all of this is said and done and one point six five is gone, there may still be a problem. So, I would be much more interested in knowing what is the piece that's left over? And how much would that cost if we were to go a full bore? Because if we're going to spend that kind of money now and we're going to have problems in five years with the pieces that we didn't deal with, we've just thrown one point six five out the window.
No, we're not doing that. Just because the areas that we were fixed now could be corrected and done. The area that I was referring to is additional area that's remaining on the building that is still original construction and may or may not have problems. We haven't cut any observation holes in there to see what's going on. So we're not throwing anything out the window. The money that would be spent here would be well worth it and fixing it to last for a long time. These, this other area within the building is, is additional area that is, is right now from the outside what we can see is not exhibiting any problems.
There's no windows there either, Alan?
There's no windows that have too much sound wall.
There's a possibly a different way to correct that, but I would just
Right.
legs of it, so.
But, you know, with weathering and time and so forth?
In time, it may get to be an issue because back in two thousand and five when we did this section of, or when we did the gym, this section of the building that we're talking about now was looked at and it was nowhere near in this condition like what it is now.
I would want to make, I, I would want to make a recommendation that we test those areas and putting a couple of holes in and doing what you've done here so that we can assess. It does not preclude moving ahead and doing what we need to do with what we've identified, but I don't think we ought to be flying in the blind five years from now uh, with a potential problem that could have been addressed while this is going on. I mean, that's just something maybe for BGT to take under consideration.
It is work that expands the size and scope and magnitude of this project, so it could not be accomplished within the two summers that we've, you know, scheduled out for this portion of the project. So that would wind down into a third year, or a third summer for, for the, if it needed to be replaced, probably replacing it.
But that area, area, isn't a critical area like this, is it?
Correct.
Not to put another fly in the ointment, but, um, because so much of this is focused on the reconstruction and safety and just general construction of this wall, is there any time to consider any type of modern construction achievements that we can gain by, say, uh, energy? And I'm not talking energy savings of putting in different windows, but if there's solar or if there's geothermal or if there's any kind of new things that, that could be incorporated in this project? I mean, as long as you're tearing down a whole darn wall, you've got an opportunity to maybe achieve some efficiencies or... Is that, does that have any merit?
Yeah, um, I'm just trying to rattle through the different possibilities. I mean, did you say geothermal?
I don't, yeah, I'm just throwing...
Yeah, I mean, that, that would, that's a heating related system, so that wouldn't have an impact on us. Solar wouldn't have an impact on us.
nuclear.
I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm just asking.
The insulating value within the wall, you know, the R value within the wall wood?
You've just got a big southern exposed
Yeah.
wall there that...
In order to increase the R value, to improve the, the thermal efficiency, efficiency of the wall, we have limitation because of the existing construction. You need to widen out the wall in order to get more insulation and that cavity. And that was a cost benefit ratio there to look at because it's going to impact the foundation potentially of trying to widen out the width of that wall. And I think it gets to the point where, I mean, we could do a cost benefit, like, say, analysis on it, but it may prove that the payback on it isn't worth it, but it's something we can do. And then, you know, this, this type of wall construction with the, with the brick and the block, what we call a cavity wall construction, that's very commonplace construction today. It's a quality type construction that's engineered and built correctly. So, there's nothing wrong with the fact that this is concrete block and brick. There's just a lot of problems with this particular building.
So was it not engineered correctly or was it not built correctly? Or was it a combination of both?
Back in two thousand and five, two thousand and four, when we saw the problems that we were having on the gym and we started to investigate that and I opened up a set of drawings and I looked at a wall section through the gym and it was a wall standing twenty-one foot tall unsupported and the plan showed six inch concrete block without any reinforcement. I didn't believe it. I didn't think that that could possibly have been built that way. So we hired a company to come out with metal detectors and scan the wall looking for reinforcing. It didn't exist. So, I can't believe that a wall like that would have been engineered and built to stand that tall.
And the original architects are no longer?
Long on business.
Rightfully so, it sounds like.
Get a wall fall on them? Some, some of the changes in the...
There might be other walls, the physical ones that fell on them. But we, we, we have to move on.
If I could ask Mr. Wong to interject, what, what we can do as a motion and an action tonight within our constraints that we have for the current budget here? What can we do to get the project moving? We've got the brick, you've got the metal. I mean, what, what can we do to move the project to the next phase with an inclusion of funds as well?
Well, I, I remember the original conversation was that if we were going to move ahead on this project, we were going to dip into fund balance if we did not have the money available, um, you know, from our, from our annual budget. So I think we've kind of got that in our back pocket. I think there may be some differences of opinion, I think Sean has some ideas, um, about how to finance this project, how much we take out of our annual budget, how much we put everything on hold, um, just to accomplish this project for, uh, over the next two years or possibly a third year. Right now, we, we look like we could, you know, things are going to change every month between now and the end of the year, but it looks like we might be able to devote about five thousand, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for this project. We're guessing, what, maybe a million dollars this summer, maybe a little over a million dollars to do phase one. And then phase two would be the following summer for about three quarters of a million dollars.
Well, this is, this is going to take serious financing at some point. We can, we can scrap and scrape and, and hold more magazine sales, but it's not going to pay for this wall. We're going to have to find out a major funding source at some point. Maybe we can buy the brick out of operations, but it still doesn't fix the wall. Um, I guess what needs to happen tonight is this committee needs to authorize the initiation of the design and the review and the, the advanced purchase of time sensitive materials. I so move with the expectation that we hand it over to finance committee and see if they can come back with a recommendation as to how to finance it.
I'll second that.
Okay, having a motion in a second. Further discussion?
Does that work for you, Al? Does that work for you, Jim?
We'll do the easy job to finance that.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried out, thank you for hanging around tonight.
Uh, just point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we did have two conflicting, uh, recommendations, one from MSA, one from a, a secondary source. I, I think that issue should be settled as to, uh, which one we're endorsing, I guess. I defer to Ed and I, I support Ed's idea... I guess I defer to Adam, I support Ed's idea that trying to repair, that the best solution is to rip out that interior brick wall.
Well, I mean, I don't pretend to speak for Al, he can certainly jump in, but I think that the bottom line in looking at the recommendation that was provided by Mr. Lowersdorff, which the bottom line there was to save the interior wall.
Right.
And the issue is the metal that needs to be dealt with that's in between the brick and the block that's on the inside wall. And Al looked at what the recommendations were to try to save the inside wall and there were concerns about the consistency of the metal that was shown in the photos. And how do you deal with that without tearing down the inside wall to remove it?
Well, and I was just trying to eliminate any kind of lingering confusion out there that there may have been a different option that could have been utilized and that's not the option we're taking.
But part of the issue was is that from Mr. Lowersdorff, they were recommendations, but the architectural angle was left to Al. And it was at that point, it's like, it's one thing to, you know, here's what I say we can do. Now this guy's got to tell us how we're going to do it. He's the guy that was going to have to tell us, how are we going to do what was recommended and not tear down the inside block? And based upon that and what Al recommended tonight, the bottom line is that that's not something that he feels comfortable doing.
Correct?
Correct.
All right. Thanks.
Do we vote? Do we vote? Yeah?
No.
Motion.
Motion in a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried again, thank you. Thank you, Al. So, an anticlimactic open session item, which is the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school calendar.
I did bring an extra copy if people didn't have it too. Questions that we can address with the proposed calendar? I think I noted that we're still working with our open house date. We have an issue with conflicts with volleyball games on the designated night, both at the high school and the middle school. I sent communication to our clergy in town and I'm starting to get responses back whether or not it, there would be any conflicts with holding our open house on Wednesday night, which is typically church activity night. So far, the responses I've received are that those activities usually do not begin until families and kids are settled into the school after late.